All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we have Reverend Russ Winn of the Springs of Benita Outdoor Church with us. How are we doing?
I'm doing well. Mayor, congratulations on your election. I hadn't had a chance to say that to you publicly. My name is Pastor Russ Winn, a pastor of Springs Church Outdoor Church, and just let me say, I want to say thank you for the city council. This Easter is going to be our 15th year being at Riverside Park. So it's hard to believe that that many years have gone by that each Sunday, we have a church service out there. And I just want to say thank you to the city council for allowing us each Sunday for being out there. So, thank you. Let's bow our heads as we ask God's blessings on our time together. Father, we come to you and we ask you for your blessings to rest upon us. We thank you for these men and women who give of their time, their energy, and their talent to serve on, to serve in this great city of Benita Springs. Bless our gathering with your divine wisdom from above as we deal with the issues facing our community. Provide a shield of protection around our police, our first responders, and our military personnel who daily lay their life on the line in order for us to enjoy our God-given freedoms. We ask all of this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Stay standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Boges.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Thank you. All right, we have one correction to make to the agenda. Item 7E was mistakenly placed on the consent agenda. It should be further down under City Manager Items 10C, so that'll be moving. So next up is public comment on agenda items, not the two zoning cases. This will be just on agenda items, not the zoning cases.
Ben Herschinson, Avonlea Drive. And I'm here to just ask some questions or basically express some opinions with respect to the Trail Rail project. When I first heard about this, you know, I said to myself, keep an open mind. And then sometimes your mind becomes closed as you begin to look at some important factors like, how much is this going to cost? So I have an open mind. I'll listen to Counselor Corey. I'm anxious to listen to what his presentation is. But as I sat here at the last meeting, and I began to hear, you know, a million here and a million there, and after a while, you're kind of, you know, talking some real money. So this is not speaking against it, not speaking for it. I just don't know at this particular point as a citizen, as many behind me, whatever their opinions might be. I just hope that the numbers kind of work. As I drive around the city every single day, I see areas where I can make a list of things where money has to be spent. The roads, striping of roads, the rough roads, and so forth. I know that people in heading up their various departments know what they're doing, and they have budgets to follow. But I just hope that when this thing really, you know, rubber hits the road, that we really and truly have the numbers and that they make sense before we commit X number of dollars. And that's a serious comment, and I know you're all very responsible in your deliberations, but this one has me a little bit concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and staff, and council. Just had a couple of comments. Wanted to commend you all on, I know it's a different 7E and F, but the lighting at the, at the bioreactor center is very important for safety for downtown. We appreciate that. Also, the upgrading the bioreactor, I've had many discussions with Matt Feeney on it, and it sounds like it's, it's really a great, a great thing as far as environment is concerned. Also, quick, items 8, A and B, the Rails to Trails, I think is a very important project for Benita Springs, as well it is for the whole entire area because it will connect to a lot of different areas. And I also think that the pedal-only zones that is under Chris Corey sheet is, look forward to hearing the conversations on that as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comment on agenda items?
I live at the southeast corner of Dean Street and Matheson Avenue for 30 years now.
Ma'am, is this on the Dean Street?
Correct.
Okay, that'll be coming up. This is just going to be on other items on the agenda right now, but that item will be coming up. You have to get sworn in first for that.
All right.
It'll just be a little bit longer.
Deb Orton, for the record. I know you, I've been here many times. I'm with Friends of Burt. First thing I wanted to do was to thank those of you that were able to attend our third annual Friends of Burt All-Member Meeting. It was a ruckus crowd at the Elks and, and completely full, so we were very happy to have that. I just wanted to give you a couple of updates as we talk about, about the agenda items. The current rail-to-trail project scope, so where, what we're talking about now with the three jurisdictions, is 11.4 miles. It is Estero Parkway south into, into Collier County, and it will then connect up with the Paradise Coast Trail, go all the way down to Marker Island. So that's the plan. That's what we're working on right now. This morning, we attended the Estero Village Council meeting. The council, the village council approved the memorandum of agreement that you all will see. And it's among the three jurisdictions, Collier County, Benita Springs, and Estero. Also approved there was $15 million in the Estero Capital Improvement Plan, and it was moved into the highest priority. So both of those were unanimously approved by Estero. On April 8th, Collier County Board of Commissioners will take up the issue of the memorandum of agreement that you'll see today. And Collier County Commissioner Chris Hall, as well as the Transportation Director Trinity Scott, are committed to the rail-to-trail project and plan to fund at least 50% of their portion of the rail corridor. So we have that commitment. And I'll just close in saying that every action that we take, even though it may seem small or insignificant, every single action that we take moves this project forward. It's a transformational project for our entire region. It improves safety. I'm a cyclist who doesn't ride anymore on our roads, and I don't do that because it's so dangerous. And this project will run parallel to a high-injury network in Lee County and, and give us all a place to walk and bike that will be safer. And it's also an economic boon for other Florida cities that have experienced this. And so I want us to look to Dunedin, look to those other cities that have had a rail-to-trail come through their city and how important it has been for them. Next week, the Office of Greenways and Trails meets at the state level. They've asked for an update on Burt and asked me to represent Burt at the state-level meeting. The Office of Greenways and Trails sets priority level for Sun, for the Sun Trails program. We talked about that in the last council meeting, the Sun Trails program. They see this already as a high priority because it's a connector between Collier County's, Lee County's, and up into Charlotte County. So that invitation, I feel honored to be able to represent all of us there and give them an update. So Sun Trails is one of the four funding sources that we're looking to, three of those in the state, Sun Trails is one of those. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Deb. Any other public comment, non-zoning related, on the agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the first zoning case.
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately eight acres from the agricultural AG-2 zoning district to residential planned development, RPD, to allow up to 40 dwelling units and two deviations located at the northwest corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and Wisconsin Street, strap number 34-47-25-B2-00259.0020, Benita Springs, Florida, 34135, and providing for an effective date.
All right, Burt, you want to swear?
Anyone that's willing to be speaking on this, the petitioner, members of the public, members of staff, raise your right hand to be sworn in. Anybody that's going to testify, includes the general public.
This is on the Wisconsin one, first.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mike?
Good evening, everybody. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record. As you heard from the title block read by Mike, this is a request to rezone approximately eight acres from an agricultural zoning designation, AG-2, to residential planned development for 40 units. You did hear the full presentation at the first reading back on February 5th. We're happy to give you a little bit of a recap as well. The zoning board also heard this request and voted 5 to 2 in favor of it. You have the minutes from that meeting in your packet. What I would like to do is just go ahead and put the conditions of approval on the record for you, and if you have any questions about those, I'm happy to address them. We also have the applicant and their team here as well. So the first few conditions are relatively boilerplate conditions in that you got to be consistent with your proposed master concept plan, your proposed schedule of uses, and your proposed property development regulations, all of which are agreed upon with the applicant. Condition four has to do with the density, which is limiting them to a maximum of 40 units, assuming that the wetlands that are on-site get properly mitigated. They need to provide evidence of this mitigation to community development. Failure to do so means they get less density, and it would essentially negate the existing master concept plan and cause them to have to go back through the public hearing process. Kind of a strict condition, but they agreed to it. Condition five has to do with plantings of hedges and bollards on the east side of Wisconsin Street to offset any potential headlight glare from the proposed roadway curb cuts that they are proposing. And again, they agreed to that condition as well. Condition six has to do with a wadlin mitigation plan that needs to be provided at time of local development order to be reviewed by the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District. And if they fail to provide an acceptable plan, then this directly ties to one of their proposed deviations, and that deviation goes away. Condition seven has to do with replacement of heritage trees. They, they already did have their hearing in front of the tree advisory board. Based on their recommendation, there are three heritage-sized trees that need to be removed for the project to take place, and they need to be replaced with at least three bald cypress trees near the lake at 20 feet in height with a four-inch diameter at breast height. And the remaining heritage trees that are found on-site would need to be preserved within the preserve areas. Again, that's a condition that they agreed to. And then your final two conditions are some more boilerplate items, I would call them, letting them know that at time of their local development order and building permit, they still need to abide by all the local, state, and federal regulations for construction within flood zones and floodways. And then the, the big one is approval of this zoning action does not guarantee that they will receive local development order approval or zoning approval, I'm sorry, or building permit approval. So you do have some pretty strict conditions in there, but the applicant has agreed to all of them. Again, this case was heard by your zoning board who voted in favor of it. You did have your detailed first reading presentation from the applicant back in February. If you have any questions, we're, we're here to address it, and so are the applicant.
Motion to do it for a ref. Second.
Motion in a second.
Under the conditions specified. Right.
Any public comment on this zoning case?
Yes, we have one registered speaker, Erin Zapia.
My name is Erin Zapia. I did this back in November when I thought we were voting on it, so I will try to be a little better with my speaking this time. I think I blundered it last time, so. My, my position on this hasn't really changed. I understand from this, that last update that Mr. Fegan just did, those bollards specifically, I believe are relating to the headlight glare and potential car impact into the side of my home that has to do with the southern ingress egress of the proposed development. That southern street is aimed quite literally at the side of my house, and I, I'll be honest, and I said this back in November, my safety concerns related to that, but I don't really want a bunch of concrete bollards on the side of my house. I know that it would be obviously on the easement. There's nothing I can do about that. But I have done a lot of work to maintain my property and my property values. You should have seen that house when I first bought it. Looks very different now. I, I don't think that is a good way to address that potential issue. I think that that kind of combines along with a main consensus that a lot of us neighbors had, which was that the extra 80 to potentially 110 new vehicles that are going to be bottlenecking on Wisconsin, four-way sign are, we all think that a, a street, a way out, something on Pennsylvania will ease some of that. And I, I'm a big advocate for that. I think that would potentially limit some potential impacts into the side of my house or these bollards if those become a thing. The other kind of main consensus that many of us had, as many of us have now flooded several times between Ian and Helene and Milton, we're very concerned about the potential for runoff from this new community. We broached these questions at both neighborhood meetings. There really wasn't a good answer, of course, other than they're going to follow whatever guidelines you guys tell them they have to do for building code and all of that, which doesn't really make me sit warm and fuzzy when I've restored my house a few times now. I'd like to know really what's going to be done to make sure that we, the surrounding, immediately surrounding homes are not going to be flooded by their new properties that they're trying to build. One other thing I think that I, I really want to convey is at both neighborhood meetings, the general consensus again by us in the neighborhood is we're not against progress. I want to make that very clear. We all, moving there, I think understood that at some point, properties were going to be built there. But these specific properties, this 40-some-odd units, or at this point, I believe it's now to 36 unless it's changed, it doesn't really fit with our little slice of paradise we have back there. It, it looks completely different than what we have. I believe it'll be just way too much back there, especially with the vehicular traffic. And I believe that's all that I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment on this? Yes, ma'am.
I'm back again. My name is Colleen Brady Reardon. I live on the corner of Wisconsin and Pennsylvania. And I have been down here 24 years, and you're all still invited to come to my house during the first hurricane and watch the wave come in from the Imperial River. I don't know if they took into consideration, but that pond that they're planning on building, it's going to be on top of a, of a water that we have, because I have wells, and those wells are going to be filled. And when that water comes in, I do not care what they say, unless they're putting extra big in sewers and stuff like that. That water's going to come in from the Imperial River when it's high tide, hell or high water. And it comes in like a boom, and I have it on video, and I've sent you guys pictures. A bunch of you got the pictures. And it comes in and it'll take you out. And the last one we had, I had six and a half feet of water in my house, and that came in within 10 minutes. Our neighbors, thank God, saved us on a surfboard and a bunch of our other neighbors. They were on their roofs. We were not expecting Ian to come in that quick, so I don't know what they're planning on doing, but a little pond is not going to do it. Not a lake. I'm from north, I'm from New England, and a pond is a pond. It's not a lake. And they've got to do a lot more than just put a pond in because the water is not going to go, it's going to go in our homes, it's going to go up the streets, it's going to destroy our property again and our new plants and things like that. Besides that, the, the 80 new cars, we have kids that, that play in those streets. And if you get teenagers, you know as well as I do when you were a teenager, we did wheelies, we did burnouts, we did a bunch of stuff. So I'm sorry, those kids are going to do the exact same thing. If they can go down those roads, and I've already timed them going down Pennsylvania, 120 miles an hour before they put the stoplights in, the stop signs. I'm sorry, that's 2:00 in the morning, they're going 120 miles an hour. There were two little girls that were killed on Pennsylvania because of people racing. And that's what's going to happen on Wisconsin. They're just going to race up and down those streets and pull out. Erin's going to get people in her house. I'm going to get people up my driveway in my pool because the other entrance is in front of my driveway. So they're going to be pulling into my driveway if they, by accident, don't hit the stop, the brake, they're going right through my carport, right into my pool. So, and I have a disabled husband. So if he's out there, they're going to kill him. So I do not like this at all. I don't mind them building. We knew that 24 years ago that they were going to build something, but no. Atrocities are, no. We're a small little community, we're nice little homes. We don't need triple-tier buildings that look like they came from outer space. I'm sorry, with decktop balconies that can look into our backyards. That's not right. This, we bought here because it was a small, loving community, and we knew it was going to grow. And I'm glad it did, but at the same time is, don't kill where we live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the Wisconsin-Pennsylvania project? All right, seeing none. Discussion, we have a motion in a second already. No discussion?
Comment to make is the fact that it sounds like some of the folks are not aware that the developer of their own pollution is not putting in the sundex. They're removing that from the project, and I think the, is anybody here from the developer? Am I correct on that? I'm sorry. Am I correct? You're not, you're not putting in those sundex. You remove those. Thank you.
Any other?
And I'd just like to add that it is the policy of the city of Benita Springs to continually evaluate and assess efficiency and conveyance of water. And we just heard two people sort of say, our homes are continually destroyed. Well, perhaps this development will move the water, and that's what the intent is, toward the Imperial River. So instead of into your homes within 10 minutes, it won't.
All right, sorry, no, no comments from the crowd. Any other comments? All right, well, I just had one question to ask. It seems the one resident isn't particularly happy with the bollards. I mean, could that, could that just be, if they want them, they can have them, but if not, leave them out? Or is it, they're definitely going in now?
I don't mind bollards either.
Well, yeah, we can't have you talking out in the crowd, sorry.
Mike Fegan, Community Development for the record. The way the condition's written is they don't have to go in. It was an additional consideration, actually was one that was brought up by the applicant at first reading. The bollards right now, or the bollards and/or landscaping would be designed that it would be within the right-of-way. It wouldn't be on private property unless explicit permission was given. But it was, it was a suggestion of the applicant to, to add them to help placate the proposed safety concerns of, of traffic going through there.
Yeah, I mean, I would just think maybe just get with the homeowners. If they don't really want them, even in our public right-of-way, then, you know, I agree they don't look great, but as a safety measure, they might be good to have, but if they don't really want them, I don't see why, why we'd do that. But, but also, I know there were a couple of comments about the flooding with, with the hurricanes. That's totally different flooding compared to why they have the pond. The pond is to take care of any rainwater coming down. They have to keep, you know, the rainwater on their property before it goes out, and that's what we're talking about, where the water's not going to go into the surrounding houses. When we get storm surge like we did, anything they have isn't going to protect you guys. It's really not going to protect them either. But, you know, it's kind of act of God stuff with the storm surges. It's not something we can really prepare for with, and especially make them do anything because of, so.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor Gibson?
Yeah.
I think there was a comment concerning the patios or may not be the correct.
No.
The sundex.
Yeah.
And the petitioner mentioned from the audience that, that was a commitment not to put those in. I just want to make sure that's on the, on the record. That, his comments probably.
Yeah, because they weren't on the microphone, so thank you for adding that on there, so it's in the record. Right, Mike, that's?
That's correct. It was something that they also committed to at the first reading when they did their full presentation. That is correct.
Nigel?
Just again, for the audience's understanding, in our CIP plan, I believe it's, is it $21.5 million that we're going to spend on the Pennsylvania Avenue project?
Yes, but that's not going to protect you from storm surge, as the mayor pointed out.
No, not storm surge, but.
It'll, it'll help with drainage, yes.
All right, no further discussion, then roll call.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purden.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, item B.
This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, rezoning approximately 4.6 plus-minus acres from the two-family conservation TFC-2 zoning district to residential planned development, RPD, to develop up to 48 dwelling units located at 11035, 11089, 11113, 11125, Dean Street, strap numbers 36-47-25-B4-00064.000036-47- Three-six dash four-seven dash twenty-five dash B four dash zero-zero-zero-six-three-point-zero-zero-zero-zero. Thirty-six dash forty-seven dash twenty-five dash eight-four dash zero-zero-zero-six-two-point-zero-zero-one-zero. Thirty-six dash forty-seven dash twenty-five dash B four dash zero-zero-zero-six-five-point-zero-zero-zero-zero. Thirty-six dash forty-seven dash twenty-five dash B four dash zero-zero-zero-six-four-point-zero-zero-one-zero. Benita Springs, Florida, three-four-one-three-five, and providing for an effective date.
Did you get all the dashes?
I thought you lit off there for a second. It was short-circuited in there for a second.
Good evening, council. Go ahead.
I want to swear in all of the witnesses. Anyone who's going to testify on the petition, that includes members of the public, please raise your right hand.
Yep, anybody doing public comment on this needs to stand and get sworn in.
Do you affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Mary?
Good evening, council. Mary Tornberg with Community Development. As stated, this is a request to rezone four point six plus-minus acres to a residential plan development to allow forty-eight two-family villas attached at this location. Staff does recommend approval subject to the conditions outlined. The zoning board did recommend denial four to one back in November. This case came to you for the first reading in December where you provided some feedback to the applicant. The applicant and their team are here, and I will let them go ahead and explain any changes they've made and their request in totality. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Neil.
Good evening, fellow racers, Neil Montgomery. I'd like to introduce the team. Richard Forman's here for Sagamore. He's an expert in real estate development and finance. Joe McCaris is here. He's an expert in architecture. Michael Herrera is here. He's been a registered PE and has testified before as an engineer. Connor Goulding is here, instead of Mr. Sturck, who's an expert in ecology. Patty Kulak is here. She's going to provide testimony. She's an expert in planning. And last, but certainly not least, Jim Banks, who's an expert in transportation, engineering, and planning. You can see the property that's located, and the sort of maroonish area is the downtown district. This property is eight-hundred-and-fifty feet from the downtown district, so it is, in a sense, very close and connected to that area, and we would expect it to take on some of that ambiance and character. You've already been told, this is a rezoning from TFC-two, which is duplex to two-family attached. So the difference is the firewall rating, the firewall for when you sell off both sides is a better firewall than for a duplex. So that is in itself an improvement and a public safety factor. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our expert in planning, Patty Kulak.
Good afternoon, council. Patty Kulak with RVI. I'd like to take us through our request. As we're familiar, the property is located at the intersection of Dean Street and Matheson Avenue. The current zoning on the site is that TFC-two that Neil Montgomery mentioned, and we are in the future land use designation of a medium-density residential area that has a maximum dwelling allowance of eleven-point-six dwelling units per acre. We are proposing to rezone this property to be an RPD, a residential plan development. The property is designated as that medium-density residential, which permits a variety of uses. We allow for single-family duplexes and townhomes, again, at that maximum density of eleven-point-six. The proposal that we have before you this evening brings the density in at ten-point-four, which is below the maximum density allowed. And as Neil also mentioned, we are less than a quarter acre from that downtown district. It's worthy of mentioning that because that downtown district does have a form-based code, there's a certain streetscape that we'd like to keep, and we have maintained a version of that with our residential plan development. The zoning map that you see on the screen here shows that there's a variety of different zoning types within the general vicinity of the site. We have a mix of single-family, other duplexes, and other RPDs. Their width, that eight-hundred-and-fifty-foot, or that quarter-mile from that downtown district, again, talks to the logical placement for modest density, given that this is an area that has a variety of zoning types. As mentioned, this plan has come before you, but we have completely changed it. So the plan that was reviewed by the zoning board back in November and presented before you in December, it did comply with all of the code regulations. It did receive a recommendation of approval from staff, and it spoke to the common ownership or the condominium type of housing. However, that plan did come with quite a few concerns from both city council members, staff, and the public. Some of those concerns being overall compatibility, parking, traffic, and drainage. The new plan, as you'll see on the screen and included in your packet, goes through and addresses some of the items that were discussed, including expanded setbacks, an enhanced stormwater system, increased guest parking, and overall pedestrian connectivity taking that sidewalk up Matheson Avenue. Taking each point, we have our expanded setbacks. So along the northern and the eastern property lines, the previous plan that was reviewed had a fifteen-foot setback. We have increased that by sixty-six percent, bringing that new setback to twenty-five feet. So an additional ten feet used for that expanded setback. That reduction of, excuse me, that increase to the setback also acts as a visual buffer for the neighboring residences. The further you bring it away from their property line, the smaller it's viewed from their windows, their kitchens, wherever we are. The next change that we made were the landscape buffers. Within that additional setback, we have a five-foot width Type A buffer along that northern and eastern property line, and then along the two street frontages, Dean and Matheson, we are proposing an enhanced Type D buffer, fifteen feet in width. I'll take you through that enhancement. We are proposing a fourteen-foot tall trees along the streetscape versus the ten that's required by code, additional trees throughout, and a double hedge row that's added for the screening to both the neighboring residences across the street for that guest parking that we added at the immediate entrance of the site. On the screen, you'll see some example images. On the left side, we have that Type D buffer with the hedges and the trees. And then on the right side of the screen is an example of that rain garden. We're going to speak to the rain garden as both latoral plantings are rain garden, and both of those are within our dry detention. So we have three things happening all in that one area. Parking came up from neighbors and also city council, so we addressed that by increasing parking by ten additional parking spaces. The last plan that was seen had fourteen. We're now proposing twenty-four parking spaces. In addition to the guest spaces, each unit will have two parking spaces, one enclosed by a garage and one in their private driveway. All of those parking regulations will be monitored by either a homeowner's association or a property owner's association that can limit the number of vehicles per dwelling. And that limit could, again, protect the neighbors from any spillage or overflow of traffic. That association will be able to manage that. Some additional site enhancements, we're considering the new sidewalk along Matheson Avenue to allow the connectivity all the way from Dean, taking it directly north to Matheson Avenue. There's not currently a sidewalk there. We also propose a bench along that and our latoral rain garden, which will be right at that corner, that southwest corner of the site, visible from the intersection. One thing that has maintained since the last time this plan came before you is the only deviation request, which is a ten-foot building separation where twenty feet is normally required. Staff has been in support of that deviation from the beginning because it is consistent with other plan developments, not only in the general vicinity of our site, but also the entire city of Benita Springs. And the buyright zoning for this, which is the TFC-two zoning district that the site currently is zoned, it could yield up to a maximum of fifty-four dwelling units, again, coming in at that eleven-point-six dwelling units an acre. Our proposed plan this evening has forty-eight dwelling units, bringing that maximum density to the ten-point-four dwelling units. With the reduction, with the density, we have deeper buffers, we have enhanced landscaping, and overall better site management that would not be able to be achieved through that general TFC-two zoning, as there would not be an overriding entity for a development there. I'm now going to pass it over to our architect, Joe McCaris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. My work is to look at the architecture. And when you look at character, Benita, Benita Springs, you look at the character, you see beachy, you see fun, you see small town, and definitely Florida. So when we were looking at this, obviously, because modern is very popular right now, we looked at that and some other contemporary issues, but we really thought that old Florida was the most bright way to look at the housing units here, to fit into the community, the immediate community, the downtown community, and a locational. So, character for old Florida is, we'll talk about massing. Massing is the shape of the building and how that fits in there. Typically, with an old Florida residence, you have simple forms, but not a box. It can be boxy, but not just four walls and a roof. So while these have that box, they've been pulled in and pushed out to create some undulations within the front facade. We've added a front porch to both units, as you can see there, shutters, and that the garage is not the main focus of the house. So the next thing that when you're looking at for character within this archetype is materials. What we're looking at here is usually in a old Florida, you have stucco, board and bat, and clapboards. What we're using here is a stucco base and an accent of board and bat on the center, above and below where the front porch is. You, with this form, we've added to the roof so that it's not just a square, but we've added a little dormer at the front, which is very traditional and gives it more of a cottage, old Florida-style look. Shingles and/or metal roof is also consistent with the style of old Florida. And then looking at colors, again, I go back to the character of Benita Springs, southwest Florida, which is beachy, fun, small-town, Florida-ish. So we're looking at some pastelly colors, maybe a sherbet pink, pale sky blue, and maybe an off-white, which is very traditional. And as you can see, the backs of the buildings have also been highly articulated with the dormer at the back, shutters, and covered overhangs at the rear doors. It's another view. And that's it for me. Next up is civil engineer, Michael Herrera.
My name is Michael Herrera. I'm a civil engineer with Blue Shore Engineering, and I'm here to talk mostly about utilities and stormwater management. So in terms of utilities, we're in the Benita Springs Utility Service District. As you can see on the screen, we've obtained a letter of availability from Benita Springs Utilities stating that they have capacity for the project, and they will be servicing this project. In terms of stormwater management, we will be submitting applications both to the city of Benita Springs and to the South Florida Water Management District. We'll be in compliance with the local and state regulations. There's really three aspects to stormwater management on this property in particular, both water quality attenuation and floodplain compensation. Floodplain compensation is not going to be required as the property is not in a floodzone. What you see on your screen, which is hard to see a little bit, but you can kind of see where the yellow highlights are in the corner quadrants of the site. And that's where we're going to be providing dry retention. So all of the dry retention systems are going to be interconnected. They'll go into these dry retention areas with one point of discharge, and that point of discharge will be discharging into Dean Street. You can see it on the bottom left, southwest area of the property. The water quality has to do with, for this is nutrient loading, so the postconditions will provide less nutrient loads off-site than pre-conditioned. The same holds true with flow rates. The existing site does not have a stormwater management system, nor does it provide any water quality. So what's happening in the existing condition is as soon as it rains, water discharges the site into the right-of-way, uncontrolled, higher flow rates. Also, it doesn't provide any nutrient loading removal. It rains, it comes off-site. And the postcondition, obviously, everything gets attenuated onsite through a control structure. Nutrient loading is reduced, flow rates are reduced. In essence, better water, lower volumes going into Dean Street right-of-way in postcondition than in pre-condition. That's pretty much it for stormwater management. And we have Connor with Environmental.
Good evening, council. I'm Connor Goulding, in place for Jeremy Sturck. Don't worry, I won't keep you too long for the environmental. So you can see forth our land use mapping, we designate as one flux, which is a one-ten, which is a residential low density. There is no wetlands on the property or environmentally sensitive native vegetation communities on site. Species, same thing. Not many, or no listed species were observed on the property during a protective species survey we conducted on site. And utilization by listed species or wildlife in general will most likely be limited due to surrounding development. Now I will pass it off to Jim.
For the record, my name is Jim Banks. I'm president of JMB Transportation Engineering. My firm was responsible for preparing the traffic impact study, and I did testify on this matter in a previous hearing in front of this panel. The traffic impact study was prepared pursuant to the city's standards and guidelines. In other words, you all have specific criteria that I have to meet when I prepare these traffic studies. Your staff, city staff, reviewed the report and agreed with its findings and conclusions. As we're all aware, the adjacent road network consists of Dean Street and Matheson Avenue. Those are the two principal roads that will serve access to this site. Both roads function as minor collectors. Dean Street extends between Old Forty-One and Imperial Parkway, a little bit beyond Imperial Parkway, and Matheson extends from Dean Street up to Terry Street. So they do interconnect with adjacent arterials in the city of Benita Springs. The posted speed limit on Dean Street is twenty-five miles per hour. Sorry?
There you go.
There we go.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry about that. See, y'all were listening to what I was saying. You can just read in the notes. And Matheson has a speed limit of thirty miles per hour. Matheson has a sidewalk on the west side, and as Ms. Kulak mentioned, that we would be putting a sidewalk along the frontage of this property. Dean Street also has a sidewalk along the north side of the road. The intersection of Dean Street and Matheson Avenue is a four-way stop intersection. So that does create a little bit of a traffic calming effect in that area, and that is right adjacent to our project. The project, as I mentioned, will have direct access to both Dean Street and Matheson Avenue. So residents have the ability to either use Matheson Avenue to head up to Terry Street or return from that direction, or access Dean Street. Now, it was determined that the project's traffic demand that will be placed on Dean Street will be only one-point-eight percent of the road's capacity. So I just, I want to repeat that. So I just, I want to repeat that. The traffic generated by this project will utilize 1.8% of the road's capacity. It will only use 3/10 of 1% of Matheson Avenue's capacity. So based upon that, and your all's adopted standards, this project is defined as having, and this is your standards, not my standard, is that this project will have an insignificant and negligible impact upon Dean Street and Matheson. As concluded and affirmed by your staff, the proposed multifamily project will not significantly or negatively impact the adjacent road network, and there is a surplus of capacity on the adjacent roads to accommodate this project. Now, at the completion of this project, and after all the units are occupied, the adjacent roads of Dean Street and Matheson Avenue will still continue to operate at the adopted level of service and be in compliance with the comp plan, the comp plan standards, as well as the city's Land Development Code standards. And the project will not cause any off-site transportation deficiencies that would be required to be mitigated. Now, we've prepared the traffic study for the zoning application, and your staff agreed with its findings. But in the future, when this project moves forward and we're seeking development order approval, I will, myself or somebody like me, will have to prepare a new traffic impact study based upon the data at that time, and then to ensure that the project's impacts will be assessed again. And if some deficiency is defined at that time, then it would be required to be mitigated. So that concludes my testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, I'll turn it back over to Patty.
No.
And if, right now, it's just questions up here, sorry.
So similar, Patty Kulak, for the record, similar to the traffic study, there are criteria that a rezone petition is required to comply with. As you'll see on the screen, we have eight rezoned criteria, all of which this project is compliant with. In addition to those eight criteria, there's three additional criteria which are considered the formal findings. We are also in compliance with all three of those. And because this request does have that one singular deviation for the separation, we have two additional criteria that we needed to comply with, which we have done. So all of the requirements per the Land Development Code criteria that the zoning board is reviewing this against were compliant, and staff agreed with that in their staff report. Taking it out of just the Land Development Code and bringing it higher level to the comprehensive plan, we, this project holistically addresses the density that is needed within a residential community, the allowable uses for the site, a housing availability that we know the City of Bonita Springs is in desperate need of, and having the necessary infrastructure to support these houses. We talked about traffic, we have our letter of availability from the utilities department, and we've spoken about stormwater. All of these criteria were also reviewed by staff, and staff was in agreement with us on those. Taking it one step further, we held two community, we held two neighborhood workshops, which were mandatory per the code, but we took it upon ourselves to do an additional community meeting after these plans have changed. We held that meeting last month, we invited the public, and we gave them a first glance at these plans, and we walked through each of the changes. I could tell you, because I did that presentation, it was very similar to what you saw tonight. We highlighted each point, each change, and how that change was addressing the concerns that was, that were listed previously. And since that meeting, we have continued to have outreach with city council members, with city staff, and with individual residences who reached out directly to myself, directly to members of our consultant team, and direct member, and members of our consultant team. So in conclusion, all of the items that we have addressed tonight and spoke about, this project is in compliance with. We are in compliance with the Land Development Code criteria, we are in compliance with and support the comprehensive plan and the goals of the City of Bonita Springs. And we, we've listened to the community outreach, the concerns, we've listened to the staff recommendations, we've listened to what the board is addressing in terms of making sure that this development not only is well-designed, but also is an asset to the city by providing that necessary housing. And again, being as close as this site is located to that downtown district, there's not many properties left within the city that can handle a new infill development. We took the considerations of that form-based code that the downtown district has and used some of those throughout our residential plan development to try to incorporate and complement it by also incorporating landscape elements to complement the neighborhood. I'm going to hand it over now for an economic review by Richard Foreman.
Good evening. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for taking the time to listen to our applications. We believe that this is a valuable and important project, not only for the adjacent neighborhood, but also for all of Bonita Springs. How do I do this? How do I do this? Oh, it's a different presentation, right?
Pause.
Sorry.
There's that glare.
Is it over there? No. Great, thank you, thank you. Tonight, I'm going to walk you through some information about the employment situation of Bonita Springs, the neighborhoods surrounding the Dean Street project, some of the concerns that have been expressed by neighbors, as well as the support that we have from the community. There are 18,000 employees that work in Bonita Springs. Right now, 83% of those employees don't live in Bonita Springs. Therefore, for every employee that lives and works in Bonita Springs, there is an imbalance where 4.8 people are commuting into town. They clog our roadways, they use our services, but they don't live here, and they don't spend their money here. However, a lot of these employees, particularly the younger professional employees and managers, do want to live here. They want the energy of Bonita Springs, they want shorter commutes, and they want an urban lifestyle. This is a map of where employees live. The average commute, not only for commuters, but also for the people that live in Bonita Springs, the average commute for Bonita Springs employees is 20 miles. Over 27% of the people travel over 25 miles to get from home to work. It's a lot of time on the road, it's a lot of traffic on 41, Bonita Beach Road and I-75, we all know it, and it also creates a lot of pollution. Taking a closer look at Bonita Springs, you can see that the employees live predominantly between 41 and I-75. That is our urban core. The Dean Street RPD designated by the Red Star is smack in the middle of that urban core, and it's where resident employees live and where non-resident employees wish to live. We've worked with John Talmadge's office, who is responsible for the Lee County Economic Development Department, and he and his staff were able to walk us through some of the underlying data that exists in Bonita Springs. The gray shaded area you see on the chart represents two census tracts. The Dean Street RPD happens to lie right between two of those census tracts. For the purposes of this presentation and the way that we think about it, that really is our neighborhood, extending from the train tracks to I-75, south of the Imperial River, north of Bonita Beach Road. The City of Bonita Springs has 59,000 people with a labor participation rate of 46%. That means 46% of the people over the age of 18 are employed. The average age is 63 and a half years old. If you look at the adjacent neighborhood, the participation rate is 83%, almost double, and the average age is 33, almost half the, half the age. We believe that this development will attract residents that want to have an attractive market-rate home adjacent to the energy of downtown Bonita Springs. Again, looking at that local neighborhood, the neighborhood that we defined on the gray chart before, 51% of the homes in that neighborhood have garages. We've included a garage with every one of our units. The median home value in the neighborhood is $384,000. The average home, average, has 2.9 bedrooms and 1.9 bathrooms. The development that we are proposing is in conformity and consistent with these averages on bedroom and bathroom size. Again, looking at that community, the average age of the home in that community is 45 years old. There's been very little development in this neighborhood. In fact, over the past 17 years, only 6% of the properties have been improved. That's about a third of a percent per year. It's practically non-existent. According to MIT, the average lifespan of a home is between 50 to 63 years. 38% of the homes in this neighborhood are over 50 years old. In this neighborhood, there are 720 homes, or 84% of the total, that were built prior to the introduction of the Florida Building Code. The Florida Building Code was introduced in March of 2022 due to Hurricane Andrew. It provides for many things, reinforced roof-to-wall connections, windows and doors. In general, I think everyone would agree, the Florida Building Code has allowed us to live better, safer lives, protecting not only property, but also lives. This neighborhood is in desperate need of new development, built to modern building standards. We are optimistic that the Dean Street RPD can help jumpstart improvements in this neighborhood. And this is what we propose. We propose attractive, market-rate housing, built according to the latest building codes, enhanced drainage, retention capabilities, all to benefit the local neighborhood. Based upon feedback we've received, we enhanced the rear facing of the house to make it look to have much greater street appeal. We believe that this is going to be an exciting new residential option, just a stone throw away from Old 41. We believe it will attract young professionals, managers, doctors, those people that want to have a house near downtown Bonita Springs. Bonita Springs downtown is exciting and it's revitalizing. The newest venue is Sugar Shack, which I hope everyone has gotten the chance to go to. There are lines out the door, and it is the most exciting new destination in all of southwest Florida. Byron Donaldson knows that. The new neighbors want to live in Bonita Springs and socialize at Sports Challenge America. They want to leisurely stroll to Wolf Moon and grab a coffee and a pastry. Combined, these new residents at the Dean Street RPD are projected to spend over $1.5 million in the local Bonita Springs economy. Now, of course, traffic is a problem. Many people, when coming here tonight, I'm sure, said, "What time do I need to leave to get there on time? How am I going to avoid the traffic?" Traffic is a real problem, particularly on Bonita Beach Road and 41. An important factor in traffic is commuters. The more people, the more that people have to travel to and from work, the more time, the more traffic that's created. And it is well-known by every urban planner that the closer that people live to work, the less traffic that there is on the road. We estimate that these 48 homes will reduce road traffic, VMT, vehicle miles traveled, by over 262,000 miles per year, every year. It's a reduction of pollution, it's a reduction of traffic, it's something that's good for the community. A lot of businesses in the community support this project. Collectively, they represent thousands of employees, including many professionals and managers that are working in Bonita Springs. These employers know firsthand the challenges that they face and the dire need that we have for good, attractive, quality, local housing opportunities. As Patty mentioned, well, actually, later on this evening, you're probably going to hear from some of the neighbors. In fact, I'm sure of it. First, I want to thank them, we want to thank them, for their passion and their presence. We know they care about Bonita Springs, that's, there's no question about that. And that's the reason that they are here tonight, they care about this community. Besides the two required meetings, we also had an additional optional meeting with them a week or two weeks ago, and I personally reached out to some of them. I've had the chance to meet with them one-on-one to try and understand some of their concerns and see how we can be a good neighbor. You're going to hear their concerns about drainage, about traffic, about parking, setbacks. And I'm pleased to say that we've made changes to all of those things, changes that are not required by code, changes that go far beyond what code mandates, but we've done so in order to address their concerns. I want you to keep in mind, please keep in mind, that there are 59,000 residents in Bonita Springs. There are 4,100 residents in this local community. You're going to hear from a handful of residents tonight that believe they are going to be impacted by this project. I urge you to keep the needs of the entire City of Bonita Springs in mind while considering this project. As I mentioned, we've made substantial changes in this project. The one thing that we've not changed is density. Our plan for 48 units is 13% below what zoning provides, provides for. Density provides us the ability to enhance the project as we already have with increased setbacks, with landscaping, rain gardens, additional parking. Making this project a success is not a no-brainer. In addition to the local concerns, we all know there are economic headwinds, such as tariffs, interest rates, and immigration reform. The proposed density, what we've put forth, is what is required to make this project feasible. I'm going to give you a minute, just a moment, just to read what Michael Win, Michael Nguyen wrote. I like what Michael Nguyen said, particularly the part where he said, "If we can't find common ground," he worries about the future of local businesses here in Bonita Springs. "We have labored very hard to put together a plan that was thought out and responsive to the needs of the entire community. I sincerely appreciate the time and the effort that city staff, that our team, and of course you, the city council, has put into this project, and we want to say thank you for your consideration and your support."
We have nobody else for our present, presentation.
Thank you, Patty.
All right.
Motion to approve as conditioned by staff.
I had a question.
Nigel?
So if I, Patty, I think you'd be the one to answer. I have two questions and a comment. So the parking improvements that you showed on the parking improvement slides, you said there were 24 new spaces, but the slide shows 21. Where'd the other three go?
They're on, on-street parking. That's when you leave the guest parking area, it's directly to the north. There's three on-street parking.
Second thing, it was mentioned, market, market-rate homes. So define market rate in the current environment. What are you anticipating the home price range to be for these?
I'm going to look over to my developer for that.
Sure.
So, so when we say market rate, it's to distinguish it from, there were concerns that people had about saying something's affordable. Affordable has a negative connotation sometimes. So the term market rate is meant to distinguish that this is not Section 8 housing, this is not affordable housing, from a government program providing support for either a criteria to get in or for subsidization.
I appreciate it's not low-income housing, but my question is, how do you define affordable? Because, yeah, we all care a great deal about our young professionals, we want them to stay and work here, but are they going to be able to afford these? So what's that range?
So, so, look, I mean, the neighborhood is what it is. The average median value of the home is $384,000. You can't be, you can't be much, you know, you, that's an older home and whatnot. The projects, the properties in Solace, which is on Boca...
The projects, the properties in Solis, which is on Boca, Boca Grande, or, next to the fire station. That's easier. Solis is selling for, I think, the low to mids four hundreds. So, look, who knows? You know, there's so many questions. What are tariffs going to do to materials? What is it going to happen in immigration? It's very hard to know exactly where it's going to be, but in terms of today, it's going to be what's comparable in the market.
So comparable to what we're seeing in our market right now?
Correct.
That's what I'm looking for.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Are we going to hear from the public?
Yeah. I was just seeing if anybody had public up here.
Yeah. I do have one question. And my, my question is, I, before, when we had the presentation of the revisions and feedback from council members, I did ask the question specifically, are these units going to be sold or are they going to be rented?
I have it written down because I was expecting that question. And I actually included it in this slide so that I could reference it. So I'll be very transparent about that. These will be condominium or common ownership. That has not been determined which of the two, but it will either be condominium ownership or common ownership. And they will not be single-platted lots, so there will be no plating of it.
Hey there.
Yes, sir.
Will there be restrictions on the number of vehicles allowed per household?
There will be through the HOA or the POA. So either the homeowners' association or the property owners' association will have the ability to limit the number of cars permitted per unit. There, the development is planned for two vehicles per unit, one that is in the garage and one that is in the driveway, and that does meet the standards that are both in the TFC, so the current zoning, and we're proposing that with the addition of the guest spaces.
The developer does control the condo docs, so that is what your intention is, two units, I'm sorry, two vehicles per unit?
Correct. Someone will have to fill out it, you know, when they move in, they'll have, you know, what vehicles do you have, and they can have two vehicles.
Restrictions on overnight parking, that sort of thing?
Well, I think it depends, you know, there, certain communities say, "Well, if you want to park overnight, you need a special permit or something in the window." I'm not going to say that we're never going to allow overnight parking, but, but I think the, yeah, I think, I think the rule of thumb is going to be that if you're living here, if you have three vehicles, this is the wrong place for you.
Thank you. Jesse?
Do you want comments on this now, or do you want to have the public go? Because I have plenty of comments, but I think it's, I think we probably want to hear from the general public as well. I'm sure some of them have similar thoughts to me, but I, I'm happy to kick off if you like, but if not, I'll...
Yeah, we like doing this.
Yeah, you can go ahead, and then we'll, then we'll do public comment.
All right. Let's, I'd like to start here, and this is not, this is not being petty, but it's important. It's Bonita Springs. It's not Bonita Springs, and the reason I, I say that is because you're here and you're ready to develop the city, but you, you come here to the council and you don't even say the city's name right. That, to me, it's, it's not just you, it's indicative of how development tends to happen. People come places, they see an opportunity, and then they think they can throw money into it without actually understanding it. And that rubs me the wrong way. More so because I know the backstory. I met with the developer twice after this was, first came up, and I saw all the people who have now three times elected me to this seat. I was at their doors, and I was told adamantly by everybody they didn't want the project. But I'm a fair guy, I like private property rights, I wanted to be able to give an opportunity to make some changes so that we could get to a workable deal, where if I voted for this, when people came with torches rightfully, I could say, "Hey, hey, hey, I got some concessions." And the main, the main thing I asked for was units. And we went back and forth and played patty cake five times, and not once was there any concession on units. Units is symptomatic of the rest of the problem, the traffic and all the other things that come with it. If they would have, if you would have played ball and come down on that, we could have had a further discussion. But after three times around the world, it came back, the units are the same. I said, "I wouldn't come to the meeting if we don't change some things. I think we should punt, wait, work it out again." They decided not to do that and decided to come today. My neighbors, who all liked me, also decided to come today. I'm all about a fair deal, and I tried to make one numerous times, that I could at least go face them after they just put me in office for the third time and be like, "Hey, it's not as bad because he could have had fifty and I got him to forty, or I did this and it's that." Refusal to play ball. And then you come here and you don't know how to say the city's name. So with that, I am out, and I'm out.
Any other comments before public comment? Mike, do we have any registered public comments?
We have twelve. Diana Walker, and she'll be followed by Samuel Colombo.
Before we do so, I would just like to incorporate the staff report into the record.
What was the first?
Diana Walker, and she'll be followed by Samuel Colombo.
Your Honor, counsel, my name is Diana Walker. I live south of Dean Street on Matheson Avenue, near the Oak Creek Preserve. And I've been watching all this, I've been to all the meetings, and not one time, sir, did they talk about reducing the density. I'm retired, I get to see what goes on in that neighborhood every single day. I work out in my yard, I see mothers walking their children to the bus stop right there on Matheson North of Dean. I see prams, I see bike riders, I see e-bikes, I see, we are a very pedestrian community. And this scares me because I see our community everywhere. And as far as the traffic issue, Dean Street is used as an alternate route during season. They make a left-hand turn onto Old Forty-One, they come along Dean Street, and that stop sign there, it backs up all the way to Old Forty-One because people are trying to circumvent Bonita Springs down to Seventy-Five so they can get home. I see it, I've taken pictures of it, and I'd also like to enter into the record, this was a shock and awe presentation by RVI. I have a little thing I might want to share with the mayor, if you're willing to look at it. I did a little research on the internet, and I looked at probabilities of what will reside there. And if you're willing, I'd like to enter it into the record.
You can submit it to the clerk. You still have two minutes if you want to continue talking.
Oh, I got two more minutes?
A minute and fifty-one seconds.
Basically, I took from the census, a family of four, times forty-eight, times nineteen, which would be the regular TFC Two. The delta on that is a hundred and sixteen people. The delta on cars, from the Department of Transportation, we estimate three cars per unit. That would be the difference from nineteen units as a TFC Two to what they're proposing at forty-eight is eighty-seven cars. That's the delta. So, and then I looked at another website, dogster.com, and said, "How many dogs are there going to be?" Forty percent of those units will have dogs. So there's cacophony, there's activity, there is overflow of vehicles, and it concerns me greatly for all those kids. And I, I don't want to sound melodramatic, but I see it every single day. People walking their kids to school, the school is only a quarter of a mile away. I don't, I don't see it as a safe, a safe project. TFC Two, fabulous. We all expect growth, we've all talked about that there, there will be growth. But keep it the same as everybody else has been expected to adhere to as well. Because other people have asked for, you know, changes in zoning, and let's keep it TFC Two. There's plenty of, plenty of room there for, I, there is a map there, associate, oh...
Thank you. Next speaker? Mike?
Samuel Colombo, and he'll be followed by John Conard.
I'm sorry, no, no clapping. There'll be no applause in the room.
Well, I mean, their presentation is very nice, and I guess one of the problems I see is that the standards of being in the springs allow this kind of stuff to go on. And, I mean, we just, the first group was, was eight acres, forty units, and now we're talking four and a half acres, forty-eight units. It's, it's very dense, and, yeah, I'm sure they can sell them all, but if you walk around the neighborhood, I mean, you could see from the screenshots that they showed, you might, you might be able, if you built conventional homes, you might be able to get sixteen homes in that space, and they would be conventional homes. But we're talking about forty-eight doors now in that kind of a space. I mean, that's, that's the neighborhood I walk around, that I live around the corner. Just, I just wonder what kind of future Bonita Springs wants for the, for the city. And we're going to just start tearing houses down and putting up, you know, twelve houses on per acre, eleven houses per acre. I don't even know where that number comes from, to be honest with you, because when you walk around that neighborhood, there is not eleven houses per acre, there just aren't. So get in your cars and drive around and take a look at it. But, no, they could reduce it, if they were doing twenty-four, twenty-four units, that would be respectful, you'd have more than, you'd have more green space and you wouldn't have all that density. It just doesn't make sense. They're saying this is downtown, I mean, you walk around the neighborhood, it's not downtown, I mean, we're going to just have a bunch of buildings, you know, just wedged in here, I mean, the rate this is going, they could buy ten homes, you know, for the going rate, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and then they could put forty up. But is that what we want for Bonita Springs? Is that really what you guys want? Because I'm driving around some of these new neighborhoods in Astero and around here, and it's, it's just house after house after house, there's no space. And I guess that's what people think they want to have, but that's my question, because we can complain about we don't want it in our backyard and all that, but every time you do one of these, you do another one. And eventually, that's what Bonita Springs is going to look like. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Conard, and he'll be followed by Frederick Leeloo.
Good evening, I'm John Conard. I've lived here thirty-one years. I live on Harbor Drive, I'm not in this neighborhood. But I know they are planning on this single-stall garage as a parking space. But if we looked at that picture of that house, the white house with one-stall garage and a driveway, and then a brick parking space in the front of it for parking, that's what's going to happen. They cannot get all of their toys, electric bikes, wagons, garbage cans in that garage and then get a car in there besides. There's no way it's going to fit. So now we have a car on the driveway and one someplace else. And if they say they're only going to allow two cars per unit, that's a hundred cars or ninety-six, that's a hundred cars coming out of there. That's way too many for four and a half acres. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Frederick Leeloo, and he'll be followed by TJ Huckleberry.
Good evening, Frederick Leeloo. I live across the street from, on Matheson Avenue, about it for you and for you. This project is actually Dean Street. So why do we hear about Matheson Avenue? I mean, there's plenty of the project, at the end of Matheson Avenue, there's also a big lot with a lot of people living there, there's only one entrance. Now we have two entrances or two exits. I live across the street from their driveway, it's going to be in, in my driveway, basically. So all those lights are going to come to me. So forty-eight houses, that's pretty much what, sixty-nine parking for their cars, that's it. And they have three bedrooms, so a hundred and forty-five people, so more likely one hundred cars or more coming on Matheson Avenue. I mean, if they wanted to, they could have put the entrance and the exit on Dean. Obviously, they did not do that because they know it's not going to be happening because it's going to be a problem, a huge problem. So they put the exit or the entrance or both on Matheson Avenue. So he says zero point three percent on Matheson and one point eight on Dean is going to be pretty much the reverse. I mean, if I was buying a house here and I want to exit, I would definitely exit on Matheson Avenue. Maybe I can enter on Dean if I'm coming from, you know, Seventy-Five. So that's the issue of the parking. The water runoff, I know, you know, Michael did a good job explaining, but that street, I don't even know the name of that street because that's a street, forty-eight houses. Basically, forty-eight houses, that's more than houses than you have in any other street on Matheson Avenue. You take two other streets on Matheson Avenue, there's less houses on those streets, right? So think about that, too. So now, all those people are going to accumulate and living at the same time, more likely. And that, that big street coming down, I know they did a good job and they're trying to take a picture of it, but that water is going to rush down on Matheson Avenue, it's going to rush down, it's basically four acres, so it's a long, I don't know how many, you know, feet that is, but it's a lot. So I know they did a good job, and they will do a good job, but there's other people here who could talk better than me about the project near the school, when they have two to three hundred places, the parking is not good here and the water is bad. Some people actually were involved in lawsuit because they did such a good job, but why is it lawsuit? Because their water comes to their yard almost inside their houses. So, yeah, they do a good job, but however, there's problems. So they did have problems then, they could have problems for this one, too. So my issue is the address is Dean Street, but why is it Matheson exit or entrance? Right? That's pretty much, you know, and I'm not against, I love Bonita Springs, and that's why I came here and choose this city. But I'm not against either, you know, having new houses and everything else, but, yeah, I think we all agree that a hundred and forty-five people on four acres, that's kind of a lot. So, thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, sir.
TJ Huckleberry, and he'll be followed by Michael Rubenstein.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come in here this evening, I appreciate it. I've been here for about thirty-eight years now. I'm a retired combat veteran, without a doubt. I'm very happy with Bonita Springs, and I've, my wife worked here, Bonita Springs Utilities, for quite a long time. One of the things here is, we've heard all about this, you can only water your yard so many times, and you've got the water shortage. Well, how are these people going to water their yards? It's just adding to their yards, and we're told we can water our yard two or three times a week. Duh. Where's the common sense? We've got to think about the people who've been here for a while. You can go up down Dean Street, you've got homeowners putting out signs, "Drive like your kids live here." All right? I'd like to ask, really, where's somebody from law enforcement here?
You just have to present to council.
Okay. I haven't heard anybody get up here yet and speak about it. You go down here on our street, and you've got school buses, you've got kids coming down with e-bikes, everything else, you've got four stop signs, what happens? Come on over and look at it, come down here someday when the kids are going to school. You'd be amazed. You've got California stops or whatever you want to call it. I have a wheelchair, the government even gave me one. They decided I need one after they gave me Agent Orange, okay? No. I can't even go down our street because you've got these people out there that are rentals, and they're letting people out there. They park, you've got two lanes down there that's supposed to be a county road, if I'm not mistaken. All right? You've got people coming in there and they park the wrong way, face not the wrong way, and you can't know what's coming. You've got people, we've got elderly people out there that take their grandchildren for walks and everything else, and they don't care... You got people, we got elderly people out there that take their grandchildren for walks and everything else, and they don't care. They come zipping through there, county road, yeah, twenty-five miles an hour, fine. Come on out there. Come down there at night when that car's turning the wrong way on a different street. You only got two lanes. What's gonna happen? Who's gonna be at fault if I get hit by a car? Duh. My kids are gonna say, oh, Dad, I can't even speak to my dad anymore. I can't speak to my grandfather. I can't speak to my grandmother. Come on, folks. Let's wake up to reality. There's gotta be some common sense here somewhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Michael Rubenstein, and he'll be followed by Jessica Sterns.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, it's an honor to be here today. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Michael Rubenstein. I moved to southwest Florida in nineteen eighty-nine, and I've lived here basically my entire life. I work in southwest Florida. I'm a board member of many local organizations, and I'm currently the vice chair of the Collier County Housing Finance Authority. Um, as the vice chair of the Housing Finance Authority, I've reviewed many plans of many communities. You saw the plans for this community today. Uh, they look amazing, much improved from the surrounding neighborhoods. I found them comprehensive, thorough, and I think this would be a very successful community and a thriving community. Additionally, it would bring much-needed housing to the area. I have colleagues, um, I'm lucky I moved here, you know, in nineteen eighty-nine, and I already live here. But I have two colleagues who are younger. Uh, they live in Cape Coral and Fort Myers. They have to drive hours a day to get to and from work. Uh, it's stressful on them and their families. Neighborhoods like this are much-needed and would help workers like them tremendously. It'd help local businesses. It'd help provide housing for local families. Um, just a list of other positive reasons for this development. And I fully support this development, uh, on Dean Street, and I hope you all consider supporting it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jessica Sterns, and she'll be followed by Al Barak.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Sterns. I live directly on the southeast corner of Dean and Matheson Street, thirty years now. I've seen the city grow, become somewhat better. I was here, I voted for incorporation. The plan sounds great, however, a lot of things were lacking in my mind. One of them is human factors. Dean Street's very narrow. So is Matheson. It's posted twenty-five on Dean. You finally fixed the other solar-powered speed reminder sign. It only took four years. If I do twenty-five on that street, I'd get, my chances of getting rear-ended are at least fifty percent. I get passed all the time by people, especially if it's early in the morning or in a hurry. And they don't care if there's a school bus there or there's children trying to cross the street. That particular intersection, I've witnessed several crashes at, because people blast through those stop signs. They don't even slow down. A lot of them make the right-hand turn, and with that entrance and exit where it is, it's gonna be blind to a lot of drivers. So you can look for some future fatalities, either at the intersection or at those driveways, those entrances and exits. Now, I've driven ambulances in my life. I don't like the results of having to pick up parts. And when I call the sheriff's department and complain about people running stop signs, I seldom ever see them in the neighborhood. The density of this development, yes, it's great and profitable for the promoters, but it certainly is going to cause problems for the people who live in the area. Not only am I going to be subject to more noise and more traffic and more abuse of my property, I've had, I fortunately, because people used to take shortcuts across the corner of my yard. When the sewers were put in, I had them put the coral rocks along two sides of the property. Three times, people have tried to move those rocks. That's what happens on that street. So I think you re, oughta, oughta rethink the equation and get round, down and realize the humanity of people. And I'm at a point in my life where I'm, I'm stuck there the rest of my life, however long that is. And, uh, being a retired Air Force person, twenty years, my pension and my social security make me survive, but not much more. And my property value hasn't been going up. So my plan is just to go out feet-first, and I don't wanna see other people have to do that and put up with the inconvenience. Just because someone wants to make a buck. Let's make the density reasonable and stick to the TF2.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Al Barak, and he'll be followed by Zachary Smith.
Al Barak, uh, live on Roslyn Drive, neighbor to this development. Uh, I have a bunch of signatures. There was a petition that went around. Over a hundred and five signatures of our neighbors. Wanted to, uh, see if I can put those in the record. Is that possible?
Yeah, if you wanna drop, if you wanna continue speaking when you're done, drop it off.
Okay, thank you.
You don't waste any of your time.
Thank you. And, um, a lot of things have been covered. I, um, I just noticed in the presentation that we're not in the downtown district. Uh, I also noticed in the presentation that, uh, they were showing other, uh, various types of developments. But I saw a lot of yellow where, where our property is, where this property is. It's strictly neighborhood. It's, there's no variation. We're right, this development is right in the heart of our, um, single-family and duplex zoning. Uh, let's see. There's a couple other things that stood out. I, um, wanted to talk about the allowable uses. Uh, yes, that's a technicality, I think, uh, because, um, you know, we don't wanna just put all of the, um, units in there that are allowed, uh, just, just for the sake that they are allowed there. Um, there has to be discretion. We, we need to, you know, weigh a lot of the factors. And, and our, our biggest issue, I think, is the density. We, we, uh, the community, the neighbors, the locals, kind of instinctively know that the infrastructure on Dean Street, the intersections, the traffic, the water problems, uh, they can't all be explained away with reports. You're not gonna, I mean, the one percent and the three percent usage or thirty-five percent capacity on traffic. Um, we just kind of instinctively know that when we live there, it's, um, it's more, it feels like more than that. There's a livi- livability factor, and, uh, we don't wanna ruin it. Uh, the project looks nice. I like the fact that they made some concessions on the setbacks for me personally, but it doesn't really help the rest of my neighbors, and, uh, and it doesn't, doesn't help the location. And is there a guarantee that everybody that lives here is going to be working in downtown Benita Springs? You know, I really don't, I really don't think so. They could be working in Naples, or they could be working in, uh, other areas. So, um, that was a big part of the presentation, and it just didn't make sense to me that, um, everybody that lives here is just going to go to work downtown Benita Springs. So there's gonna be traffic. They're gonna be heading out to I five, uh, seventy-five and other areas. So I, I want that to be considered. And another thing that bothered me was, um, I've got fifteen seconds. I don't want, I, I, I wish there was no fear of legal reprisals and lawsuits. The city has authority, and we don't want you to make decisions under duress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Zachary Smith, and he'll be followed by Ben Hirschenson.
Good evening, council and mayor. Um, I'm further down the list, so I'll be echoing a lot of the things you've already heard from my neighbors. I live on Dean Street, directly in front of the proposed project. Um, as many of you know, I also own a business in downtown Benita, so I understand the need for infill projects. Um, I have staff that also does not get to live in Benita like I do. I'm the closest employee to my business. Um, I wish my staff had that same luxury. So I would like to see infill projects that actually take care of workforce housing. However, the developer can't answer if this is gonna be condos or apartments. Yes, it's HOA, because it's gonna be required, but they can't answer if it's gonna be condos or apartments. They can't answer how much they're gonna go for, understandably because of market value. But there's no guarantee that my employees or the employees of Sugar Shack that they put on the screen are gonna be able to live there. I, too, have had many private meetings with the developer, and when I asked this question, I was told, servers and bartenders, no, maybe the manager. So most of our workforce probably will not be able to live here. There is not smart development going on. It's a beautiful project. It looks great on paper, but there's the human factor of use, as you've heard from the neighbors. The garage is eighteen feet long. Eighty percent of cars sold in twenty twenty-four were pickup trucks and SUVs. They are longer than eighteen feet. So most cars that Americans own will not fit in this garage. Plus, they have, they don't have a dumpster on property, so the trashcans have to be in the garage. So you're taking away from the eighteen feet of the garage. So what vehicles are gonna fit in there? Not vehicles that most Americans own. Uh, then the parking spots are stacked, so you're playing this musical chairs to try and get cars in and out. Let's say a husband and a wife live there. One tries to leave for work, the other one's different timing. We're playing musical chairs to get cars out of the garage. Jesse, I was very happy to hear your comments, because I think, um, they were very similar to mine. I think a little bit lower density could have solved a lot of the problems here. Uh, the density is emblematic of all the problems that they're seeing. They could have added more, uh, parking. They would have, um, you know, reduced traffic. Um, I think there were changes that they could have made. The concessions were not enough. As much as I would like to see a project like this go forward, I just wholeheartedly cannot endorse a project as it stands. You know, there has been a lot of talk about traffic. I know that doesn't fall on the developer. That's gonna fall on public works, but I do ask the city to please take a look at that. Um, to my understanding, when Mosaic, now Waterline, went in at the head of Dean Street, they were supposed to put in a roundabout. That never happened. Try pulling out on Dean Street and head south on Old Forty-One. It's the next one possible. I cheat and go down and then do like a U-turn on, you know, down by Downtown Coffee, because you can't make that left. Um, I believe I saw a traffic study. It was conducted in July of twenty twenty-four, so not in season, not during school. I mean, so that's, that's a flawed number right there. Um, we do know, as Nigel Folick is gonna talk about this evening, Benita, uh, Lee County Schools plans to increase the elementary school, so we're gonna be increasing traffic there. Um, there's a lot of projects that are coming on Dean Street. The city has not done enough to keep Dean Street and Matheson, has not done enough to provide the foundation for this development to go forward. So I think until we address, um, the infrastructure with those streets, and until we see a project that's more thoughtful, um, again, I just, I can't support it. So, um, I hope you all will vote in favor of the citizens here, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Ben Hirschenson, and he'll be followed by Randolph Reyes.
Good evening. I was gonna say good morning. It's been a long, uh, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. Um, I thought when I came to the meeting tonight, I knew exactly what I was going to say. But, uh, having somebody who's been in education for a number of years, I have no idea what I'm gonna say, but I'm gonna try. I'll say, let me start off this way. I'm probably one of the oldest people here tonight, so if I say something you don't like, just be kind. You know, he's an old man. Let him go. That's, that, then I'll be happy, so. But I'm gonna talk right from the heart, and I'm gonna talk very directly. I really appreciated the comments that I've heard from the members of the public especially, because they were sincere. They were heartfelt. But, and I'll, and, and the issue of, um, being full, uh, being candid and open and full disclosure, um, I've been through this presentation before. I'm a member of the zoning board. And I listen very, very carefully, again, tonight as I did back then, last November, which is another interesting comment. The, any zoning application takes forever. That's another topic for another time, because we gotta do something to cut this down. I don't know how we'll do it, but we'll, I'd like someday to suggest some sort of workshop. But that's not the topic for tonight. The topic for tonight is this project, the Dean Street project. I, it's tough to be a member of the zoning board or a member of the council to have to listen to Barry's presentations. One part of it is beautiful development. We really need it. The other part is you have the public comment. It is tough. It's tough to separate the two, if they, they interlock with one another. But from my position over the years, I consider all these pro, all these comments from, from all of the input, the consultants, the applicant, the city, and I have to say that when it comes down, I look at two things as being the most important. What does the law say? What are, what, what's in the ordinances and what's in our, what's in our codes? I put a lot of value in that. They're not there just to sit and occupy space in a big document. They mean something. And it's a tough decision when you have all of the factors relative to z, z, a zoning requirements. You have setbacks. You have density, which this is below what the maximum density could be. So I put a lot of weight in that. And, again, the first thing I look at, what does the ordinances say about this particular type of project? So I was for the project back in November, the only one out of the entire zoning board. And I'm still supportive of this project tonight. A lot of things are happening in Benita. I, I'm excited about the idea of, was it, uh, Imperial Forty-One? Or was it Forty-One Imperial? Either way, it's, it's exciting to see. I moved here twenty years ago, and I'm finally seeing, I hope they, I see some of it, uh, at my age, that it's coming to fruition. So the city of Benita Springs is not the sleepy little town it was. It's coming alive. It's, you can see the downtown. We have a plan ahead of us, finally, for the downtown area, which I support wholeheartedly. We heard met numbers about demographics. We need a broader demographic, younger people, younger, younger families. They will add a lot to this community. So I support this project, and I hope the council will consider it as well. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Randolph Reyes, and he'll be followed by Rhonda Watkins.
Good afternoon, council. Um, my issue here is, is I drive around here in Benita Springs, and, uh, I, I like the town. It's a beautiful little old town. I'm from California originally, and we have a lot of small towns like, like this that have, have expanded and, 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 and the face of the town has completely changed. It, it's not the same place anymore. And, uh, I'm starting to see that here in, in Benita Springs. It used to be a quaint place and cute and nice, and people want, wanna come here, and, and they still do. But I hate to say it, there's just getting to be crowded here, overpopulated. People love to come to Florida. The weather's nice. You know, but with that comes a lot of problems. And, and I'm just gonna echo from, from what I've heard here is, you know, the, the traffic is a big issue. The safety is a big issue, especially on Dean and Matheson. That, that's a fact. I live on Tangilo, and, uh, I wanna go to Home Depot. I, I just, I have to be really careful coming around the corner on Tangilo to, to Matheson, because the traffic's doing about forty, fifty miles an hour, even faster, all the time. because the traffic's doing about forty, fifty miles an hour, even faster, all the time. You'll see it. There's not much policing going on there, which there should be. I make another left onto Dean and I'm heading east. And there's kids, there's young people, a lot of young people on bicycles darting across the street in both directions, not looking at the traffic coming at them. You know, these bicyclers are, we all had bicycles. I love bicycles. To put a motor on a bicycle, cool. Electric motor, great. But it's becoming abused. These kids have these bicycles, they're all painted black. At nighttime, they don't even put the lights on because it discharges their battery too fast. You know, so you don't see them. I've almost ran into a few bicycles. They're there. They're not going to go away. And with this, a development like this, it's just going to bring up a whole lot. It's going to become compounded. It's going to be a lot of that, a lot of safety stuff. Not to mention the timing in the afternoon, like on the corner of Forty-One and Dean, where they built that giant apartment complex, the yellow and green. It's a problem there because of the parking. They come around there, there's no place to park. Or they're full. Or if they're parking on the street, they only have about two or three feet, if that, in front of them and behind them. I mean, it's a problem for those people to get in and out. It's all, it's not marked off fore and aft, you know, for parking spots. It's just general parking. Park on the side of the street. And, yeah. I think that it's a safety issue here, more than anything else. A lot of this stuff about people working in Bonita Springs and living elsewhere, yeah, that's true. But like the other gentleman said, you know, people are going to work wherever there's a job. You know, and if it's here, great. If it's not, so be it. So really, when it comes down to it, we all know that it's about money. It's about money. That's what it's about. And it's going to get worse, okay? You know, they'll find another little spot around here where it's open, a little grass field or something, or a few trees, and you'll try and, you know. How far do you want to go with it? How far do you want to build up little Bonita Springs? How dense do you want to make it? We already know it's dense. A lot of people are almost living on top of each other. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Rhonda Watkins, and she'll be followed by Yvonne Burellis.
Mayor, Councilman, for the record, Rhonda Watkins, Tangelo Terrace, Bonita Springs. I'm here this evening to state my opposition to the rezone at the corner of Dean and Matheson. This part of old Bonita Farms would be completely changed by a forty-eight unit condo development. I don't think any of us realize, we don't, we're not opposed to development, but I agree with Councilmember Nona, we want something at a reduced rate. You have rules to control limits of development. That includes zoning. This area was zoned to keep this neighborhood small scale. It's ironic that the landscape architect indicated that, or the architect indicated that this development was going to be beachy, small-scale charm. I don't consider forty-eight units and four and a half acres small-scale or charming. I've worked in local government for thirty-five years and I've watched time and time again as developers threaten local government officials with the threat of a hit from a Burt Harris lawsuit. And despite public opposition, developments get approved. Current zoning laws are really our only way to stop large developments like this and the easiest way for a council to keep development under control. I will also guarantee you that stormwater design, while I'm sure it meets the criteria, will not be adequate for what they're proposing in such a limited footprint. We already know that existing stormwater design criteria, even the newer ones, are inadequate to protect from flooding due to more extreme daily events. It's not uncommon now to get fifty-year storm events back to back. The concessions I heard made tonight for stormwater, presented to you as a concession, were likely required because they increased parking and increased the impervious surface. So that requires more stormwater treatment. And the current stormwater rules, past and present, have never been adequate to protect water quality. The concession is being made that this is going to provide more water quality treatment, which in fact it's not. That's mostly open field. There's no runoff now. So how is there more treatment once you put hardscape and streets and houses on it? Nobody's fertilizing this property currently. It sits empty. So, Council, Mayor, I hope you have the courage to stand by your zoning laws and your zoning board that were designed to keep Bonita the small, unassuming, not development-hungry city that we've all come to love. Please vote no on this rezon.
Yvonne Burellis, and she'll be followed by Anthony Rochio.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Burellis and I am a resident of Bonita Springs. When, and I do not live in this area, but I certainly have a vested interest in the development of the town and the beautification and the needs of the community as a whole. When there was development around my neighborhood off of Imperial Highway, the high school, there was opposition to the high school and there was opposition to the large development by Poltey right behind my community, where there are two hundred and fifty homes, not forty-eight units. I didn't oppose either of those projects because I understood that it meets the needs of not only, it meets the needs of the community as a whole. I have three other, three points to make here, and that is there have been concerns about too many vehicles, too many pets. And the difference in this project is that it will be led by a homeowners association. And if you have lived in a HOA community, you understand that there are greater limitations than when you live outside. So there will be control. And really, it restricts the people that will want to live in that community because of those restrictions. So I think that that actually sets higher standards than when you live outside. The other comment that I would like to make is the needs of the community in terms of healthcare. I'm in the healthcare space and it's difficult for us to bring in workers to Bonita Springs because of the long commute to healthcare workers who are primarily in Golden Gate Estates or in North Fort Myers. And unless the recipients of the healthcare are willing or able to pay extra fees for the premium commute, we have difficulties bringing in workers to Bonita Springs. Finally, I would like to say that on a personal level, I do know the developer. He reached out to me when this project was getting started and he asked me personally, as a resident of Bonita Springs, what is important to me? And I found that to be just natural, natural to his character. He does care about the community. He wants our community to thrive and he has listened to my concerns and to the concerns of other residents. And so I hope that you vote in favor. Thank you.
Anthony Rochio, and he'll be followed by Brian Rowland.
Good evening. I guess maybe you know who I am. I happen to be the chairman of the Bonita Springs Zoning Board. But I can tell you, I was not at the meeting November eleventh. All I, November, I was able to, excuse me, read the minutes. Look, running the risk of bringing colds in Newcastle, we have a housing crisis, not only in Bonita Springs, but in Lee County and in Florida. There's just not enough housing. The average home price in Bonita is five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And according to the, what I've read, only one-third of the southwest Florida residents have access to housing that costs less than forty-five percent of their income. Just focus on that. Forty-five percent of their income on housing. How much is left for food, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Anyway, look. So that's what I have to say. I think, I really think we need housing in this town for all the reasons you've heard. The zoning board, in my opinion, acted wrongly. The applicant met all of the requirements necessary for approval. The city of Bonita Springs agreed with that. And it should have been approved. Now, comments of the public, in my opinion, are valuable, but not dispositive. The record, the zoning board should not act because certain residents are complaining about various things that have nothing to do with the regulations, all of which have been met. So call me strictly a strict constructionist, whatever you want to do because of my legal and judicial background, but that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tony.
Brian Rowland, and he'll be followed by Jim Magnus.
Evening, Council, Mayor. My name's Brian. I've lived here in this area for twenty-five years now, in all of Bonita Springs, Estero, and in Naples. And I've seen a lot of growth and I do have to mention that I love what you have been doing to Bonita Springs. It's really been fantastic to see the growth. I've been, you know, in the past twenty-five years, we have seen it, a little sleepy town. And, you know, I'm conscious of those that have lived in this area for many, many years, who have a lot of history. And there are a lot of places here that do preserve the history of this town, so I can appreciate all of that. You know, I own a business here in Bonita Springs, a catering and events company. And I chose here for its location, its community, and its enormous potential for growth, as a lot of business owners try to do. I do have a three-year-old daughter. Her safety is of utmost importance to me and my family. And so I can appreciate and respect all the concerns for traffic safety, absolutely. We do find this in all communities. You know, I think as this world is growing, as the population of this world is growing, we are starting to see these concerns, no matter what type of a housing project this is. These concerns are, you know, the future for our children and their children. You know, to be honest, we live in one of the most desired places, desirable places to live here in southwest Florida. You see it in the news all the time. People want to be here. Businesses are helping the community thrive, and in order for these businesses to continue to thrive, we need local workers. We need people that can actually come and support our businesses too in helping the community. You know, the company that I own has grown exponentially over the past thirteen years. And we were affected, like most, post-COVID. The labor market was destroyed nationally, specifically in the food service business, an industry which is where my business is. And the cost of labor went through the roof, which was caused by numerous reasons, including the cost of living, commuting costs. You know, as was mentioned earlier, we also have a lot of employees that come from Cape Coral. They come from North Fort Myers. They come from Golden Gate. Often, it takes them forever to get to work. They're driving an hour and a half back and forth because they love working here. They love working with us. But, you know, often it causes them to be late. It causes them to not show. It causes them to have car problems. It causes, like a lot have mentioned today, traffic issues and concerns. And, you know, it affects them financially. It affects our clients because of some tardiness sometimes that occurs. And ultimately, it's a challenge. This project looks absolutely beautiful. The plans look great and have met all the requested requirements. This plan looks to be able to help provide additional housing options that many local workers can help these businesses, like mine, continue to service this community. And that is very important to us and the longevity of our business too. So I am in support of this project. Appreciate you listening to everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Magnus, and Mr. Magnus is the final registered speaker.
Hello again, Mayor, staff, and Council. I can appreciate how this is a tough one for many of you. You have a lot of well-meaning citizens and residents that are in that area that are concerned about the project. The tough thing is that this is a project that fits the zoning. It fits the requirements that the city has for its future plans and for its growth. And so that makes it a project that, you know, should be approved. In my particular situation, we do own a duplex across the street on Dean. And we are in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, is there any other public comment that didn't previously register? Anybody else that wants to speak on this? All right, we'll close public, oh, did you want to talk? Okay, we got one more.
Council, my name is Luke Umshid. I've been a resident here for over forty-three years, although I don't look like it. I've been listening to a lot of this and I've been trusting in the council's decisions and not felt the need to be here until I've seen this, again, another rehash of the zoning. And I had several things which have been highlighted by the fact that I have many unanswered questions. I have a math background and it's really easy to skew data based on a data set. So you have a density calculation. What is that density calculation? Well, it's pretty easy to skew a data set by things like, there is a maximum amount of cyanide you can ingest. But if I ingested all of your maximum amount of cyanides in one person, I've still met the minimum requirements. I've met this, I've met this. But I die. I have harm. So I love it when I see all these calculations because it really leaves so many questions in my mind. I saw things like massing in view were based on trends. Great, trends are wonderful, except if you see, like in my business, I've been, and I'm a project manager doing remodels. Tuscan was a trend twenty years ago. Nobody wants Tuscan anymore. Great, that's a trend. Simple as colors. You look down at Mosaic, light, beautiful colors, except they're all dirty all the time because of the color scheme. We're going to have another incidence of just community that's just going to look dirty based on these beautiful colors, but maintained by a homeowners association? I don't believe I have an answer for that. Stormwater management. The impervious surface calculation was approximately sixty percent. That's awesome. But again, that's a rule of averages. You have things like nutrient loading that supposedly reduce, but in their planning, that is concentrated to four or five areas. I have a well. Many of my neighbors also have a well. You nutrient-load a specific area, that is going to get into this groundwater. Traffic study. Yes, they are minor collectors, but that is, again, a law of averages. A law of studies that have been done not based on our seasonal traffic flow. And as I've experienced, as many of these ones have experienced, the considerable traffic plugs at these intersections, they've been experienced by all of us. What numbers have been there reported for adjacent Ragsdale, Old Forty-One, Terry Street? Economic impact. Now, valuable to the adjacent neighborhood. My question is how so? You know, I'm literally an adjacent neighbor. My house was in one of those pictures. But traditionally, multifamily complexes, or this complex as a whole, does not increase value to the neighboring community. I hear of employee travel times and distances, but these are not the cause for necessary affordable housing. It is the cost of living of the area we all live in as a whole in this huge community of southwest Florida. There was mention of only six percent of the properties improved in the area. Now, now wait a second. What is the basis of this calculation? Is it simply permit data? Now, this is not an accurate data set because this has not taken into consideration the many improvements that do not need and have not needed a recorded permit in the forty-year history. Bonita Springs downtown, now this is close, but it's certainly not downtown close as expressed by someone here. And I'll tell you, close is only acceptable in horseshoes and hand grenades. There was a big statistic that shows two hundred sixty-two thousand miles reduced in driving a year. That data seems to also be skewed towards the optimistic because as most of the people, the professionals who have been aimed to live in this area, they don't have a place in downtown Bonita to work. So they're...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, sir.
My name is Robert Vasquez. I live on Tangelo. I was wondering if my neighbor and I, we can build a skyscraper on our property. You know, twenty stories? Because apparently everything can be done. So all I have to say is I oppose this.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, does the applicant want to rebut any of the comments?
Yes, I think we'll act for the record. I'd like to bring up that all of these concerns that we've heard this evening are not new information. These concerns were heard during our voluntary public meeting. These were heard during both of the required meetings. They were heard through the numerous conversations that we've had with staff, or excuse me, with the residents. It's been ongoing throughout this entire process. A lot of the items of concern tonight, and we've heard the terminology and I even wrote it down, are human factors and the livability. We're talking about speeding on the We're talking about speeding on the street, which we have no control over, but we are, we do have control over safety elements. We have incorporated safety elements by adding the sidewalk along Matheson. We're thinking about the future of not only this neighborhood, as we're calling it, but the overall city of Benita Springs. We are adding the value of safety elements. We heard about the traffic concerns. Though our reports are all consistent that show that this is not an influx, we took the design element to only have one entry and exit point per each road, to think about that traffic concern, to be mindful of, we don't want too many entrances and exits, those means of egress, on Dean Street. We limited it to one on one side and one on the other. So all of these concerns, we have heard before, but based off of everything that you've heard tonight, we can't take the livability and the human factors into consideration when we look at the facts of this. And the facts are, this RPD meets the criteria required by the LDC for a rezone petition, it is consistent with the comp plan, the stormwater elements are consistent with the level of services that are required by the city, the traffic numbers are in compliance and well below those levels of service, and all of this will be managed and maintained through the conditions of approval that are already recommended by staff. But there's also numerous other iterations throughout this process where this comes up. Traffic will be, again, looked at once this development is built. The stormwater concerns, though we meet the city's stormwater requirements, which is all that we can do, we can only meet what the city tells us to do, and we have done that. So with all of these facts, we have made the consideration for what the neighbors want. We've made the concessions, we've listened to the concerns, and we've put forward the best project that we can, that we think not only is an asset for the direct neighborhood that we are impacting, but the whole city as a whole. We know where this is. So with that, I will end my presentation, but I would like to request that we consider these criteria that we were compared against, and I ask for a motion of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I believe there's already a motion. Is there a second?
Well, I'd like to comment that, as our last, Patty just, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, but it does meet the standards of our comp plan. Our staff has gone over this, and honestly, I trust our community development staff one-hundred percent. They are diligent, and they're somewhat ruthless when it comes to dealing with development. And, and then, the fact that you did an extra meeting, and you listened to the concerns, all right, if anything, safety's gonna be increased, right? When I get a call from a constituent that there's, like, Wiggins Pass Road is Collier and Lee on one side, well, the folks on Lee called me. I called Commander Lee. The next day, speed, all we have to do is call. Our sheriffs are phenomenal. They will, and they're actually nice to locals, right? They'll give a warning, but get caught twice, a ticket, okay? So if there's speeding going on now, it's not the fault of this community. So, and the safety issues, they're not even there yet. So let's move forth and see how such a, I mean, this is a beautiful community, and it's set in a way that it does enhance but keeps the Florida charm going, and it allows our nurses, our teachers, our sheriffs to move in. And then also, you know, folks that are gonna work downtown. And you know what? They're gonna walk to Sugar Shack, they're gonna walk to Rooftop, or, you know, Bohemian, or, I mean, because you walk, or you bike. But most will probably walk. And a sidewalk is going in, that will help our students get to school safer, and clearly we can ask our sheriffs to be around when our students are traveling to and from school at all hours. So I don't know how this community doesn't meet our standards. They've done everything, they've reduced the density, they took away the overlooking balconies, and they listened. I'm sorry, I'm all in favor of this.
Okay, Nigel?
Yes, sir. First of all, you folks that are here tonight, you're not making it tougher on us, but we really, really appreciate you being here, because this is a great turnout. It doesn't look like it to you, but it does to us, and it really helps us a lot, makes the decision harder. I've liked, three other members of this council have lived here for twenty-five-plus years, one was actually born and raised here. And, you know, at the end of the day, somebody made the comment about, we'd like you guys to, we should come in there once in a while. We live here, guys. I drive through that neighborhood all the time. I do have some friends that live there that, they were somewhat relieved, they're not happy about this project, but what they said, and it stuck in my mind, was, thank God, it's not a three-story condo complex, which it could have been. We can't build skyscrapers here, by the way, sir, the height requirement's thirty-five feet, but we don't want to see those either. We need, we need housing. I wish it was less dense, but to the comments, I feel like the developer has been pretty transparent and has tried to meet a lot of the expectations. Nobody's gonna be happy here, but I don't see where they've done anything or failed to meet the standards that we set as a council and as a city.
Jim?
Yes, I do want to compliment the developer on the redesign, the architecture renderings and so forth. I think after going through this whole thing, I just keep coming back to the point of the formal request for the separation being reduced from twenty feet to ten feet. That has a direct impact and creates a lot of the issues of density, which were referred to by a lot of the folks here at this evening's meeting. My challenge to the folks here in the future is if we do have groups and developers that meet those separation standards, would you still be in favor of it then? It's a question that we're not asking tonight, but it's food for thought, is that this is about a deviation request to reduce the separation between buildings between, from twenty feet to ten. Am I correct with that?
Correct.
So, with that, I...
Chris?
Jim raises the fundamental point, that there's only one deviation request, and it has to do with the separation of the units, and that's what gives rise to the density problem, as I see it. And so, because of that, because there's a deviation needed, it allows me to take a look at infrastructure and service costs, what's it gonna cost to maintain or widen Dean Street to accommodate the additional traffic? And what does it do to the overall neighborhood character and aesthetic integrity? What does it do to the neighbors, neighborhood in general? Is it, how big of a change is it? I'm not against the concept of the project, I'm against the density, I'm against the deviation request, and so I'll be a no vote on this project.
Jamie?
Yes, I agree with what just Chris just said, and, you know, we have goals, and long-term, short-term here, and one of the big ones is workforce housing, and that's what the developer spoke about, a lot of the community has spoke about, we have been concerned about. And when I look at this, and housing is needed, but how many people, when you have workforce housing, have more than, you know, you probably have four people living in a house? At least two drivers, if you're talking about workforce housing, and families that are coming in. I mean, I had a family of four, and we grew up in that house, and I'd like to say that's why we want, you know, our community here, we want them to work here and live here. But if you start out in this house, and you have more than, I mean, I can really only see one car fitting here, to be honest with you. You have more than two drivers, they're not gonna be able to live there, so there's not gonna be a lot of families that can come and live in these houses with the parking situation, and I believe with the aesthetics and stuff, I just don't think it's fitting for this neighborhood.
All right, now, and for myself, you know, they are meeting all the requirements, they are below what the maximum density is. So really, the only deviation is that ten-foot separation, and we have other areas of the city where we do allow the ten-foot separation. So to me, it's not that big of a, you know, deal breaker there. And we do need workforce housing. We've had a lot of requests for it over the years. And as far as seeing the neighborhood change, the future land use map, that's what allows the density to go there, because in the past, it was dictated that closer to downtown would have a higher density than further out. So that's why we're already at the eleven, and they're gonna come in below the eleven. So, I am a yes for this project, because I think we do need it, and they are meeting all the, you know, restrictions that we put on them, and they're only asking for that one, you know, slight deviation. And that one deviation is allowing bigger setbacks on the sides of the property, you know, which was in reaction to what the community was saying. So I don't see how we can really say it's gonna be too many cars on the road, because it's below what the density is allowed. So if there's, I don't think we had a second yet, I will be the second, and is there any further discussion?
Call the question.
All right, we'll call.
Deputy Mayor Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
No.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
No.
Councilmember Bogaz.
No.
The motion, the motion fails, three to four.
As it fails, do we have to, are they able to come back still because it failed, it wasn't denied?
The motion to approve failed on a vote of three in favor and four opposed to it. So the petition has been denied. I'm not crystal clear on what your procedures would be for refiling, but right now, that's a petition that's been defeated.
John?
If you're looking to deny without prejudice, that would not prevent them from coming back in to reapply again. If you deny with prejudice, they look at waiting one year before they can submit another application.
Does there have to be a motion?
I'm John Dolan.
And does it have to be justification and stated?
So...
For statute?
During your discussion, there was justification that was provided, particularly by Councilman Corey. Councilman Purdon had also provided that, and I think that all of those that had voted against the motion had echoed those concerns. So at this point in time, I think that what we're looking at is, if we are wanting the applicant to come back in, maybe listen to these concerns, address those, and give this another shot, then I think that we deny without prejudice. If you deny with prejudice, there is gonna be that year-long wait.
John, can you please explain or counsel what with prejudice means, so that the folks out here can understand?
I can talk about what that would mean, but I'm not, I apologize, I'm not that clear on some of your regulations in terms of what a denial with prejudice would mean. I've not experienced that anywhere, quite frankly.
Pull the microphone a little closer.
I'm sorry. I've not experienced a procedure where there was a denial with or without prejudice. Typically, it's simply a denial.
So, I do have the code section, yes, sir. So, reading from Land Development Code says denial without prejudice. When the zoning board or city council denies without prejudice, any application is an indication that although specifically requested action is denied, the zoning board or council is willing to consider the same request after modifications have been made, or an application for other action, without the applicant having to wait for twelve months before applying for consideration of the modified request or action. Any resubmitted application shall clearly state the modifications which have been made to the original request, or the other changes to the applications.
So is a failure to approve a denial without prejudice? Or do we have to specifically say without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Is there a better, what is the best legal option for us to do and know as a...
Well, I think, obviously, you have flexibility, I was not aware of that particular provision, and I apologize for that. I'm sure Derek Mooney would have been much more clear on that. If you want, the petition was denied because four votes were opposed to it. What you can do now is, if you, if those four votes want to make it clear that this was a vote for denial without prejudice, so that the petition can come back, and I think if the four members that voted against this will make that presentation, then I think this could be considered a denial without prejudice. If that's not the intent of the folks that voted against this, then simply move on to the next item.
I would, I would make the motion that it be without prejudice, because I am, like others, concerned about workplace housing, but I'm concerned about the number of units. So if they want to go back and re-figure the number of units, and the impact on the on the community, and the impact on our streets and so forth, and make another shot at it, that's fine with me.
Counsel, I would like to interrupt, and this might avoid the further question, the conversation that you've been witnessing happening while this is being deliberated, the concession that we're able to make right now on the spot is drop it to forty-six units in listening to the density being concerned.
We're not gonna auction this.
I understand, I'm making it known that the last...
Whatever you want to come back with, you come back with, whether or not we accept it is up to us.
Understood.
I would suggest you sharpen your pencil.
I think the comments were made basically is, we're being asked not to deny with prejudice, because I believe that the four no votes, it's all about density. If they're willing so, let them come back to us, if we give them a denial without prejudice, and they can come back to us.
I mean, listen, I don't want to put us in a pickle for saying with prejudice, but let's just say this, I've gone on this ride three times, and at the end of the ride, all three times, the units were exactly the same. So if you all want to, if you want to try again, we can, I'm happy to get on again, but at the end of the day, two more units isn't gonna do this. So, I'm happy to do it if y'all want to, but I, again, three times, and no concession on units, so I don't feel as if it's gonna be substantively different. But I don't want to put us in a spot either, so I'm good to, if you guys want to, I will entertain that, I'm good with it. But I'm just saying, my experience has been what my experience has been with this.
So of the four, Chris has already said without, you're without prejudice, Jamie, without prejudice?
I'm without prejudice.
Okay, so we're without prejudice.
Let's just, just to make the record completely clear, let's have a motion, just to clarify that this was a denial without prejudice, and then the petitioner can come back.
Motion to deny without prejudice was made by Chris, seconded by Jim.
Seconded by whom?
Jim.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes, I think it should be approved right now.
Mayor Gibson.
Without prejudice, yes.
Councilmember Corey.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Purdon.
Sure.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your time, Counsel.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll take a five minutes. We'll do a ten-minute break. We'll do a 10-minute break. All right, we'll come back. All right, meeting's back in session. Onto the consent agenda. And don't forget, we moved the one item to 10C.
Motion to approve.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
All right, any comments on consent agenda? Anything done?
I do...I'm sorry. The sheriff's number G, letter G, there's an empty spot that they haven't filled in their, you know...and this is two years ago. So can we just take back that money since they haven't spent it yet?
No, they're waiting.
I can clarify. So it's a budgeted amount, and we only get invoiced for the actual man-hours that they perform. This is an addendum to the agreement. It was already the approved positions from the prior budget. But I do know there was positions not filled, and that's why it starts, I think, in September. But we do not pay if those spots aren't filled. We get invoiced for the actual man-hours.
And it's a training thing. It's a training thing right now, is what they're dealing with. But it's...
All right, thank you. All right, mayor and councilmember items. Chris, you're up first.
Yeah, the screen sheet is the discussion, consideration of the draft memorandum agreement for the Benita Estero Rail Trail Project. As I reported, we had a meeting with the representative from Collier County, Chris Hall, the representatives from Estero, and along with myself and staff. What we needed to do was come up with an interlocal agreement that basically adds TPL to it, Trust for Public Lands. It basically spells out the parcels that are controlled by the agreement, the pre-acquisition requirements and costs, what needs to take place in terms of finally getting to a purchase, in terms of appraisals, title review, environmental site assessments, and so forth. We talk about that we will work to reach an agreement regarding how to raise money for the acquisition, construction, and management. We will make confidentiality of appraisals and so forth pursuant to state law. There's nothing that talks about money in here. There's nothing that requires funding at this point. It's just a memorandum that sets forth how we're going to operate together. So I would make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, because our lawyer is not here.
Can we vote on the motion?
Well, but I want...there was no discussion. So my discussion would be...
You're out of order.
Then we discuss. We can discuss right now.
Okay, since Derek Rooney, our city attorney, isn't present, and competent Bert Sanders is here, but he is not familiar with this project or with the sort of nuances of Benita Springs, as he's expressed earlier. So I would like to wait, because there are a number of issues that I have with this. And I don't believe that the answers will be provided.
I'll call the question.
Well, we still have discussion. So Jesse, yeah?
It's not a disqualifier, in my opinion. Bert Sanders is also commissioner in Collier County, so he's heard about rail to trails. As a commissioner, like the rest of us in elected office, we've dealt with the land trust folks. We've dealt with the rail to trails. We've seen the presentations, so we're all familiar with it. So I don't think it's fair to say that he wouldn't be able to be here for this portion of it, because he, in his own capacity, has already probably seen the same things we've seen. So he's probably familiar with it.
All right, Chris, you were going to say something about...did Derek look at this already?
Derek looked at it. It's had the input of the attorneys from Estero, Collier County, and Benita Springs. It's been all worked out.
It's all been worked out.
In terms of the wording.
Okay, so parties equal. If you want to go through this, we can go through this.
No, I don't want to go through it. I want to call the question.
Is that a motion?
So is that...
It's a motion to call the question.
Motion a second. Roll call. I'm calling the question.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
So roll call on motion to approve.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, 8B.
Yeah. You know, we talked at the last meeting about concerns over speeds and electric bikes, the safety hazards associated with their use on sidewalks and so forth. And we have this common problem that we can't really ban the use of electric bikes on any surface that we allow regular bikes. But what I did find out is that we can sort of make them like regular bikes in areas where we want to adopt pedal-only zones. And that's been done in some of the Florida cities. So we're treating them the same as traditional bicycles. Traditional bicycles are pedaled. Electric bikes, generally, I understand, I don't own one, but it could be pedaled. And so, you know, it seems to me a simple solution would be to establish, say, for the downtown area or other high pedestrian-trafficed areas, and to promote safety, would just be to have pedal-only zones. I drafted an ordinance to go along with this. And I'm not suggesting that we, you know, pass an ordinance tonight. But, you know, I have talked to others. They say, you know, in addition to pedal-only zones, you could also put with that some sort of speed limit. You know, whether you do it for all... limit, you know, whether you do it for all electric bikes or electric bikes driven by people sixteen years and under. There's been a lot of articles in the paper yesterday about how Naples, Cuyahoga County, Fort Myers Beach is trying to deal with it. It just seemed to me a pedal-only zone approach, at least for a start, would be something that we could easily adopt, and we could refine it later if we wanted to with, with speed limits and so forth. You know, it's easy to see, thinking about it in terms of enforcement, you know, it would be easy, I think, for LC SO to see if somebody is, is just riding an electric bike versus pedaling it in the zones that we have set up, you know, if, you know, it's hard, I, I would think it would be much harder to get a good speed read on some of these things, especially if they're on the sidewalks and so forth. So I just wanted to bring it up for consideration, see if anybody had any thoughts, if this is something we wanted to go down and, you know, maybe have Derek take a look at when he gets back, see if there's a direction we want to give staff to maybe flesh this out some more, look, to pull some examples of what other Florida cities are doing and bring them back to us. But I, I am concerned with the, the, the safety aspects of, of electric bikes. I know in Benita Bay, we have bicycle riders who use the streets, they're the ones that typically wear the, the garb and so forth, but we have, you know, recreational that use our pathways. Now what we're running into is electric bikes on our pathways, so we're, we're gonna have to deal with that ourselves, and.
Definitely a problem, I, I talked to Derek about it too.
Oh, did you?
To see what he can come up with, so, I'm, I'm supportive to have him look into this and see what can be done.
It may be helpful also, just, in Cuyahoga County, we just directed the county attorney to, to advertise an ordinance dealing with e-bikes, and I'll, I'll send you a copy of that, it's a little different than what you've got here, but it may be something you might want to consider adding to, to it, but you clearly can regulate the, as you've, as you've indicated in this, enforcement becomes a problem.
Right.
The Cuyahoga County sheriff is not really interested in enforcing speed limits on, you know, bicycle trails and things of that nature, but you can require that, you can adopt an ordinance like this, but I'll, I'll get you some more information.
Okay.
Jesse?
No, I think that's a great start, I mean, the bikes in certain parts of the city have really kind of taken over, and there's no regard given to, you know, any, anybody pulling out of their neighborhoods, it's just, yeah, I mean, Terry, for example, if you're going down East Terry or West Terry, and you're on one of those streets trying to come out, there's e-bikes coming thirty miles an hour down the sidewalk, and they aren't looking, so if there's a way we can do it, you know, I'm all for it, and you know, the sooner the better, honestly, so, I think it's, it's a very good move, and I'm glad that there's actually a way to circumvent the problems we've had in regards to the state saying we couldn't, so, I'm all in.
Laura?
Safety for both cyclists and pedestrians are utmost important, and there's ways of limiting people who are cycling on sidewalks, especially if there's an event happening downtown at, at Riverside Park, because I have been there where it just, people are looking at their phones to get the snapshot of, you know, the code to pay a ticket to get in, and people are cycling, and boom, and then everybody, okay, and they move on, but it's not okay. So, one thing that would really help is signage. In Florida, it's state law, you walk against traffic, you cycle with traffic. Now, if you're not from here, some people do it the reverse, because that's how it is in their states, but the other thing is, when you're on a sidewalk, which way is considered going, so maybe there could be a signage, pedestrians are always on the inside, cyclists are always on the outside, so at least there's some definition of where to go, because when I walk here to City Hall, and I don't hear the cyclist coming up behind me, because the motorized or electric bikes are quiet, and I have music on, and, you know, sometimes you hear a song and you kind of move, and a cyclist comes right by, and it's like, oh gosh, had I known, I would have, like, been like this, but I think signage would help, and FDOT is working on signage, but we could also come up with our own signage, which is what FDOT said, that the city can install signage that is at least definitive, but no pedaling in general, all around. I know Fort Myers, they don't allow any electric bikes, so you can go from Lover's Key on electric bike to Fort Myers Beach, and then you have to stop using your electric bike. Now, they might have changed that, I, I looked into it a year ago, but, okay, so, but safety's an issue, and the speed at which the bikes can go, and again, monitoring that, and then the other issue is that there's no spot to actually give a ticket, and so, when a sheriff stops and like, there's been, you know, two cyclists hit, okay, work it out, people, there's no box for us to hit, or they can write it up, or do you guys want to just work it out, and that's usually what happens, but if somebody's hurt, then it's another issue, and again, there's still no box to check, and at least that has to be changed with our law enforcement to allow them to issue tickets.
Arlene?
Thank you, Mayor Castle, what might be helpful, and I know Bert suggested he's also gonna provide us a copy, is if you'd like a motion to direct staff to coordinate with the city attorney, community development, and public works on appropriate presentation to bring back to you, so that you can have some direction towards any, a future ordinance.
Question, would it be possible to come back with an ordinance instead of a presentation, so we don't prolong this for months?
I'd like a presentation.
And we could vote on that.
Good.
We, we can do both, come back with an ordinance and the presentation, and that way we'll have the ordinance ready to go if, if we want to proceed.
I'll make a motion to direct staff.
Okay, second.
Any other discussion, roll call?
Councilmember Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
All right, 8C. Councilmember Corey.
Well, I won't make any of my usual comments, because it's late, so bear with me, we actually, Arlene was pretty persistent, we did get the school board to agree to a meeting yesterday at 2:00 PM. It was staff-only from the school board, there were no electeds, and I just want all of you to know that Bill Ribble was advised by their legal counsel that there might be an issue, that if he participated and any sort of agreements were made, that it might be a sunshine law issue, or would cause him to be excluded in a vote, so he, I talked to him last night, he really did want to be there, we still have, I believe, support from him, he understands what we're trying to do, I honestly don't think that Bill was trying to dodge it, and I, I believe that. I did reach out to Superintendent Carlin, I did not hear back from her, that's a little bit of a surprise, so, we had Arlene Hunter, Matt Feeney, Lisa Robertson, myself were live, Derek Rooney and Mike Fignan were on remotely. The school board chief operating officer, Larry Stevens, who was not on our previous Zoom call, but was at the meeting that we had here at City Hall, had, it was apparent he's not been brought up to speed, and it's just, he just really hasn't, he made it clear that he's not responsible for the past oversights, communications, or decisions on the elementary school that are over four, eighteen months old, because that's how long he's been here. He did attempt to tell us about construction quality of the school, and the effect of heat, moisture, and the environment in answer to what had not been done to maintain the school, didn't direct that, didn't make a, a real comeback on that one, just made it clear that we're all very aware of where we live and the environment, but he did also make a point of stating that Dr. Carlin has issued an order to all their departments to look for cuts of five percent in their budgets. I respectfully disagreed that our issue is a budget cut, it's more about compensation for the past, I used the word failures, I'm gonna say that now, in maintaining the structure, I'm sorry?
Sorry.
In maintaining the structure, and that, we're also, as a council, that we're really focused on well as the, the, the well-being of our children, so, trying to keep that in mind, he initially came in and said that an eleven-foot wall, instead of the seventeen and a half foot, and I told him that, being as we were talking about fifteen to seventeen, I said that it would, my opinion, that council would not agree to an eleven-foot wall, did say I would bring it back to all of you, I certainly would not accept anything like that. He, he was advised, we did advise him, that it was not acceptable at our previous meeting, which he was not in attendance. Their construction manager, I believe it was Rob, Arlene, was that Rob, I would tell you that he did share that if he, if we could accept fifteen feet, he thought he could make that work within the hundred thousand dollar budget that they have for the wall. I want to make this clear, they already had a fifty thousand dollar budget for a retaining wall to begin with, so, they're not, they're not giving us a hundred thousand dollars if they do the higher wall, they're increasing it by fifty thousand. They said that a seventeen, seventeen and a half foot wall would cost approximately two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't agree with that, but I, I see your face, Jesse, that's not our problem, but, and I had a note here, their, I believe the title that they have is, they're the government representatives or government relations, two folks there who said that they were deeply appreciative of the fact that the Benita Springs Council has been as, as patient and as courteous as we have been, and I think I did make a comment that I think we're getting to the end of that road, so, we agreed that I would share what we talked about in the meeting, that we're going to request that they stick as close to the seventeen and a half foot as is possible, the construction superintendent, I may not be giving his title correctly, but he said they would be willing to come back to us, he's going to sharpen their pencil, there may be an opportunity, Matt, if I remember correctly, to shorten the length of the wall from thirty-eight feet, thirty-six feet, and then get us closer to seventeen feet, and he's going to do that. So, we said that we, well, we're expecting that, I'm expecting that, I think Arlene's expecting that we're going to hear something before our next meeting. The fact that this has been drawn out this long, and again, I, I'm just saying to all of you, I look at this, their new budget requirements, not our problem, this has been going on since June of last year. He also made some comments that made it very clear that he has not looked at the studies, he was mentioning something that was about a year old, we've been looking at studies and engineering plans that are two and a half, and three years, and four years old, so, all that being said, I'm asking for council's direction, I know staff is too, that we ask them to stick as close to the seventeen and a half feet, come back to us with something that doesn't look like a billboard, and if they have problems with their numbers, I think Matt was familiar with the construction company, but everybody I've talked to, if we did with the seventeen and a half foot by thirty-eight feet, two hundred and fifty thousand or less, I don't know where three hundred thousand dollars comes from, but due to square footage on it, it's a twelve-inch cinder block with a brick facing and four windows that don't have murals or anything else in there, and so, pretty simple, that, that math does ring true, so, the buttressing issue that they had, seems like they've already addressed that, so, on the construction side, there don't seem to be any problems, so, my report to you is, we're gonna wait another couple of weeks, and hopefully that's acceptable.
Jesse?
I'd say tell them it needs to be eighteen feet, and that, and, and, no, I'd say we tell them it needs to be eighteen feet, and that's our starting point, and then if it gets to seventeen, fine, but at the end of the day, dereliction of duty on part of the county has been years in the coming, now the entire building's gone, all we had is this piece, now they're trying to cut this piece in half, I don't care if it costs us three hundred, four hundred, it's, that's significantly less than what it would have cost if they would have actually done the building how we would have, really, truly in our hearts wanted it, so, this is the only piece we get, they don't get to cut it in half again.
Well, their chief operating officer, the way he presented it, so, we, we did go to the point, we've already made four concessions, one is, we thought the school could be rebuilt, obviously cannot.
Right.
So, understanding that, we agreed to facades.
Right.
And our initial request for is two or three sides, that's number two that went away, number three was that we have that.
Yep.
And that it'd be a one-to-one replica.
Yep.
They're now asking us to cut that down from seventeen and a half feet to, well, the initial was, would you accept eleven feet, and I said, I know I wouldn't, I didn't think this council would either, so, just a clear message, I'm sure Bill's watching tonight, and I'm sure some of their staff is, eleven feet's ridiculous.
No, I think, honestly, I think our starting point's eighteen, to, to just drive home the point that seventeen.
Seventeen, eighteen, yeah.
Well, no, because they're gonna have to, they're gonna come back to us, but I don't want them to come back to us and be like, all right, we can do fifteen, no, do the seventeen, or we can fight about it, it's up to you guys.
Let's be reasonable and say we're, we're asking for our, what our third ask was, which is that, one-to-one.
Yep.
And the idea that it's gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, I've already talked to some folks today, no.
At the top of that, it, that isn't our issue.
Nope.
It's not our issue, that's their issue.
If it wasn't for the fact that we might hold up construction, and the kids get stuck on those trailers for another year, I'd be sitting here, let's play hardball because we can.
Yeah.
But let's continue to be gracious for two more weeks, I think, I am gonna ask, some of you on council have relationships with some of the school board members, I can assure you that I, I think that Bill Ribble has been open-minded, I think he is, he understands the tenor of this council and our community better than maybe any of them. So, Jesse, I know you've got a couple contacts, Jamie, I would ask you, and if you would, whoever you feel close to or have a personal relationship with, I'd ask you in the next week to reach out to them and tell them just how serious we are, if they don't understand that already, and the fact that we've really reached, reached a tipping point here, we've, we've made four major concessions.
Can you re, can you give us something with the four major concessions, and, and then with, that our ask is that it is the actual seventeen feet, so that we're all delivering the exact same message?
I could give that to you, Arlene.
And then, yes, I can definitely reach out.
Yeah, sure.
Any, any other questions?
I do have a question.
Hold on, Laura chiming in first.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to apologize, there was a comment that, when you were talking about, they were derelict, and I just agreed when I heard derelict, and you just heard me, but I was commenting along, and I shouldn't have said it out loud, but, so I, I apologize for interrupting you, and I am completely in favor of what you want to do.
Well, I think it's, it's not what I want to do, it's, I think it's what we want to do in the city of Benita Springs, and our committee wants to, and I think we have an attorney who can say that sometimes the way you word things is important.
Oh, yeah, words do matter.
I don't want to use certain things like dereliction, if you can just say the, overlook the maintenance.
I, I would agree, that, that, that approach certainly will be.
Better received, because there's, there's folks on that board that are not responsible for what happened.
Oh, yes.
But they are responsible for the decision as to move forward, so, let's just keep being Benita, I, I, some people that left here tonight said that, that's pretty unusual, you guys all seem to act, you actually, like, you read this stuff, and they said, people here seem to be really nice, I didn't make any acidic comparisons.
Nigel, a quick question, at this meeting, whether it's eleven fifteen or seventeen and a half, did they bring any rendering architecture in terms of what they're proposing doing?
They have, actually, what he said was, they understand that's what we want, so.
But they actually, they actually brought a document to say this is what we're proposing at eleven feet.
They showed it, they showed it to us in our, the Zoom call that we had.
So, the ask that we had several weeks ago, to bring to council a rendering of what this wall would look like, it's still not delivered.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because what they wanted to deliver was much shorter and would have looked very different scale-wise.
Right, they're kind of squatty.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we're, you guys are good with us going forward, and I'll get talking points to you two, through Arlene.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right, moving on to city attorney items. Alright, uh, moving on to city attorney items. Bert, do we have anything?
I do not have any.
Okay. And we'll move on to the city manager items.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, um, uh, Ellie is here, if we have any specific questions. Um, as part of our duties of the local mitigation strategy, um, as you recall, this started with, with Irma regrouping. It is a staff member board, and Ellie will be representing us, um, at that meeting. It is, is a conglomeration of all, uh, local, uh, staff members from the local, uh, communities as well as utility corp- companies or, and, uh, Lee Health is there, and, um, um, and so there's a representative of the community that would have infrastructure needs, um, after a storm. Um, we provided you with a list of, of projects we suggest to be put on the list. Um, we may not be funded in the tier one, but if, as you recall, many of the projects that we placed in Irma that didn't make tier one or tier two, um, recycled through the system as money's being available through other jurisdictions, and we had an opportunity to, to take action on those. So, um, you see our recommendations there, if you have any other specific questions. Um, it is, I'll let Matt cover the, the actual asks.
Uh, thank you, Arlene, uh, the, the asks were relational to Hurricane Debbie. Uh, we had the acquisition and demolition of, uh, homes in the Quin Dean Down, uh, neighborhood, which, you know, was obviously affected with, um, rainfall flooding, uh, you know, back during Hurricane Irma. And that would be kind of a continuation of what we've been doing. And then as far as infrastructure, uh, type projects related to Hurricanes Helene and Milton, we had Old Forty-One Stormwater Improvement Project, that would be the area north of the Terry Street Roundabout, uh, along Old Forty-One. Uh, we do have a project in our CIP, uh, you know, it's out several years, but it would be in furtherance of that. Uh, and then added was, uh, the demolition, uh, boy, this is apropos, slash reconstruction of the old library building.
Um, I think we'd like some direction if that's possible on those.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds good to me, everybody else?
Um, the update on, uh, recovery of Hurricanes Ian, Helene, and Milton, I just wanted to confirm, I know Tony has left, but we met all of our deadlines for FROC, so now we're in the scoring process. And so we will be getting an answer of, of the percentage we'd be, be able to receive upfront should the unfortunateness of a future storm occur. Um, and then we did move item, um, items, we have a now item C, which I will turn over to Matt to handle, which is the lighting of the bioreactor site.
So, you may recall, um, I, I, a few meetings ago, city council asked us, um, to solicit a proposal as kind of a, within one of our existing contracts for, um, parking lighting at the surface parking lot at the bioreactor. You know, with the new businesses that have come online, uh, it appears that it's, it's being used quite a bit more, and so the request came. Uh, so we, we did ask, uh, Wright Construction to provide us a price through our existing design-built construction management contracts uh, to develop a lighting plan, you know, with a lighting engineer, and then provide pr- pricing to install lights at the bioreactor site. So what you have before you is a three-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-dollar proposal. Uh, inco- includes some contingency, because, uh, the footers for these lights, or it's a, there's a little bit of uncertainty, so that, you know, there are some dollars that, the depth, or whether you use a column footing, or whether you use a spread footer, uh, depending on how it lands with the existing bioreactor structure. Uh, so that, you know, it may be a little less, but, you know, we have some dollars baked in for that. Uh, we do not have funding currently available for this project, so if you wanna move forward with it, we would need to come back to you with some dollars from unassigned fund balance.
Okay, um, hey, uh, before I go to Jim, um, I did just wanna make one comment, that I've been recently talking, uh, uh, with someone about doing a, uh, parking garage, and possibly might even be able to break around in roughly a year or so. So, maybe we wanna hold off on doing this right now, just to kinda fit this out a little more before we kinda commit to spending three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, but, uh, hopefully I'll know more by next meeting or so, but, um, Jim?
Yes, and, and to your point, uh, Mayor, is I would, um, since it is unfunded, uh, and it's not formally in our capital plan or whatever, is I would suggest that we make that consideration with the twenty-five, twenty-six budget process for that project.
Uh, Laura?
Um, well, I'd like to proceed quicker than that, in that we can find the money, I believe. But I talked to Matt, it's not in the proposal, but could we add some cameras for security? Because I think that folks who are, like, women, trav- you know, go to Sugar Shack, get them traveled to that parking lot at, you know, one o'clock in the morning, maybe a camera, a few, not to spy on, like, houses or anything, but strategically positioned so that there's a safety element as well as lighting, and you said you would look into that. So, I just wanna put it out there that I, I think that it would help to have additional safety precautions there, because downtown is becoming a destination, and Sugar Shack is hopping, and rooftop, and so when we walk late at night to that, eh, right now, it is incredibly dark. Um, to have that there, that would be great, but that's just if we can aff- afford it. Afford to be soon.
A- any other discussion? Um, so that's what I'm asking, is that we just kinda hold off on this right now, just a little bit longer till I kinda know what's going on with this.
Sounds good.
Parking garage, so, okay, but, but I mean, we definitely need lighting down there, so.
But how long, wait, wait, so you wanna hold off on any?
Do, do, committing to this, I mean, we, we may still do this.
Is gonna go there?
Yes, that's where the parking garage is going.
Cause there are other locations for the parking garage that might work.
Not that we own, I mean, there's one other, but it's much smaller, but this, this was the, basically the location for the parking garage.
Okay.
But, but yeah, um, I'm, I'm gonna look into that, um, also possibly look into maybe some kinda solar temporary lighting, 'cause, 'cause safety is a concern down there. Um, but, but we'll, I'll know more, and, you know, hopefully by the next meeting, so, alright.
And I did have one other item, um, John Dommer wanted to report on some, um, suggested, um, updates to land development code.
Good evening, and Council, uh, just kind of housekeeping that in, but it kinda goes back a long time, and we're finally getting the ability to get to it. Going back even as far as when the city bought the property with, with a billboard on it, to discussions of the billboard over at, uh, Imperial and Benita Beach Road, there has been discussion on updating our billboard standards and ordinance. Uh, we are in a position now to start making some changes for it, now that we're kinda through our recovery and in a position to start making additional, uh, regulation changes. If council desires for us to move forward with, uh, some amendments and updates to that section of the code, uh, if you would all provide that direction, and we would be happy to start drafting some language and bringing it back to you, and then going through the LPA and the normal process for changes in the standards.
Motion to direct you to make the necessary.
Second.
Providing direction to do.
Providing direction.
Providing direction.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mayor, Councilmember reports, um, Jim?
Um, two items, um, first of all, for those that, uh, were able to get into the town hall on March twenty-seventh, I thank you, but I do wanna apologize for those at home that, uh, got shut out. Um, past, past history did not indicate that three-hundred-plus people would wind up showing up for a town hall. Um, we are in the process of getting the, uh, video from the event up on YouTube, and we should know within the week, Arlene, you think, within the week, it should be out and available for those that were unable to get in. Um, but for the most part, it was well-received, and I think the message, um, that was taken back by our county commissioner and the county manager, is that clearly we have a concern about, uh, traffic as being our number-one issue, and that, uh, uh, our infrastructure is not keeping up with the growth that's been occurring. Second item, um, as the liaison with the historic preservation board, um, two items. Um, first, um, they did formally express their concern about the direction on the Benita Springs Elementary School, and I basically referred them to you, Nigel, for what that is, so. Um, but the second item was specifically, um, directed towards, um, what the future intended use for Goodbred slash Dixie Moon Building is, um, yeah, downtown. And essentially, I advised the Historic Preservation Board that this was a topic in our stu- in our strategic priorities, um, meeting, uh, of last month. Uh, and that out of that is we deferred discussion of that until we were in a forum like this, or a formal workshop and so forth. We did talk about that, uh, in our, in our workshop earlier this evening. And to that, um, I'm formally going forward to direction as to how we move forward in terms of Dixie Moon slash the Goodbred Building, so.
Yeah, Jesse, you had a comment on that?
Uh, are you asking for our thoughts on?
Yeah, I think, uh, it's basically to summarize our discussion to fi- how we should proceed with the Dixie Moon, because right now, we have, uh, ju- oh, just over four-hundred thousand dollars that are in our CIP for something to do with it, that really hasn't been specified, and there was concern about the viability of that building.
I, I think that this has been a long-time coming conversation, and it's kinda one of those, we gotta rip the Band-Aid off moments. Um, as soon as we moved the building, it lost its historic value, we spent, you know, we've thrown good money after, you know, after this over and over, and not nearly the highest and best use for where it's at with our downtown, it's a dilapidated building that has no historic value left. Uh, so my, my suggestion would be that we save the money and we get rid of the building. It's not worth saving, and, uh, it's just time for us to let the nostalgia of it go and, and move forward.
Can you make a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Motion and second? We, we can do that, Dorian?
I, I think that's to provide, I wanna clarify, that's to provide, that's to provide direction.
Yes.
For Councilmember Fitzpatrick to share with the board, but I think we're also hearing, there's, is that direction to, I think that would be the first.
So, to clarify, then, then out of this meeting is I will, uh, call the, the chair of that board to request a special meeting. At that special meeting, it's the direction of city council to no longer maintain and demolish the Dixie Moon Goodbred Building.
Here's the question, though, did, why do we need to do that? Do we have, do we logistically need to even do that? Because I feel like we're going back to a body that's gonna say, we don't want you to do that, and then we're gonna end up saying, we're gonna do it anyway. So it's like, we're gonna be, I'm okay with going through the process, but I'm just saying, if that's where it's going, why are we, why are we, why not skip that part and vote?
To bring Bert up to ste- speed quickly, um, it is on the city's register of historic places. It does require an action of the Historic Preservation Board, which they can deny, and it's appealed to the city council, it's a city-owned structure. Um, I don't think it's necessary for a special meeting, but it, they asked for an update regarding this. I think there's two folds happening, if the council wants to move forward, the, to meet the noticing process of it, we should have a, an agenda item at the next meeting to, to start the process, which is an application, um, but in the same time is keeping you all, keeping, having you prepare the board as understanding of the actions of the council. I, we can speak with Mike Figueroa about the next scheduled meeting is, um, how soon it is, and if it's necessary to have a special meeting in the interim, we'd have to work through those logistics, too.
Friendly amendment, can we throw the restaurant that Chris brought up in that conversation, too? Cause knock it both out.
I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk to the, uh, Wonder Gardens board, just to verify.
It might be also helpful to have a letter of support from the Wonder Gardens.
Yes.
Board, um, i- if that's the direction that they're moving.
So, my direction is to go back and inform the board, in that we will place an agenda item at the next or soon meeting, that basically, um, moves forward with a discussion regarding the demolition of the Goodbred Building.
I mean, I think you have options, you could demolition, move, removal, or, you know.
I think we're just, I mean, I think the whole, everybody said demolition, I mean, tha- and that's gonna be the cheapest.
And just for the folks, just for the folks on TV and for the general public, um,
All ten of you.
You keep calling it the Goodbred Building, can we call it the remnants of the Goodbred?
Yes.
It's not the Goodbred Building, it's one passageway, archway, and that's about it.
World's largest paperweight, I believe it was affectionately called at one point.
Fully in favor of that, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
So, we, we have direction, at, at the next meeting, we'll have it on, on the agenda, if it meets, uh, advertising requirements, so. Okay, Jim, that was it?
That's it.
Okay, Nigel?
Yes, sir, um, there are no TDC numbers for me to give you at this meeting, because we did not have a TDC meeting in the month of March, so I have numbers for you. Uh, maybe the next meeting, um, really good news, um, one of, uh, my two favorite boards are the, uh, Veterans Advisory Board and the Art Public Places Board. The Veterans Advisory Board chair is very, very demanding, and, uh, always making me do things. But, uh, he had requested, we had not have, had a Navy, uh, speaker in a long time. So I reached out to, uh, General Elder.
It's Matt, you're gonna have Matt speak?
Matt's gonna be clapping his little hands here. Uh, Admiral Christopher Murray, um, is, uh, just does get permission from his wife, but he thinks that she's gonna allow him to come down. Pardon?
She's a crew commander.
That's what he called her. Sorry, Jeff, Admiral Murray, um, but, uh, he's gonna come down from Washington, he is a former F-fourteen fighter pilot. He commanded a squadron, he also commanded a carrier group, and really neat backstory. He was at Miramar at Top Gun, he was a Top Gun graduate fighter pilot. He was there when they were filming Top Gun, so I have permission to tell you the story. He said they brought him in, cause he was one of their top pilots, and, uh, gave him an opportunity to interview, to be an extra or in the film. He said the filmmakers looked at him and literally told him, you've got a body made for radio. So he was not in Top Gun. Very, great sense of humor, looking forward to it, so, uh, Admiral Murray will be our guest speaker on May the twenty-sixth, Monday, May twenty-sixth, at nine AM at Riverside Park, for those of you don't know. Um, he also was the chief safety officer on, um, Richard Branson's first, um, what was it, Vulcan, uh, Virgin Galactic at their spaceflight, so he headed up that program. He'll be a great speaker. Um, and then I wanna thank, um, Jesse and, and the staff of Congressman Donalds, um, for what happened on Friday night, I've had so many comments from people who've said to me, you sound like you're proud when you're talking about this, I think we all are, and it was historic. The fact that we had a candidate for governor of the state of Florida choose Benita Springs to make the announcement, I think that's starting to sink into people, that it happened. And I don't say anybody in the other city, but that was a choice, and I'm sure you had something to do with it, but thank you, Jesse. Um, last thing, if you haven't noticed it, guys, we've been waiting for Matt two years, West Terry Street? Well, I've been waiting for two years, and much to my amazement and happiness, drive down West Terry Street, uh, tomorrow or in the near future, in the daytime, and you will see that all of the power lines but one, that go from one side of the other street are gone. And now they've started taking down the power poles and dropping those power lines, it's amazing what it's done to West Terry Street, it looks beautiful. So, it's going to be that, uh, other gateway that, uh, I'm sure the neighborhood and, and everybody in our districts will appreciate. So, thank you, who, whoever was wielding the axe, I appreciate. But, the Navy's guys got something to say.
Well, surface warfare guys differ from a pilot, but, um, the, uh, the streetlights wa- are also gone, so you would notice, because it's probably pitch black. Um, we had a, we have a contract for streetlight installation with decorative streetlights, and it was held up because the, the, there was an arc risk with the, the wires, so our streetlight contractor's been chomping at the bit to install the, the poles, we have the poles on site. They're actually, they, yeah, they mobilized them in, some of them in, just as, today, so they will be working, I, you know, I don't have a definitive timeline, but they'll be working to get the decorative streetlights up.
Good news?
Okay, Laura, you had?
Yeah, I just, can we also take the, the wires at Old Forty-One that Lee and Benita Beach Road that bring us to downtown, and kinda finish making our downtown beautiful? Get rid of the extra wires and replace those. get rid of the extra wires, and replace those pavers, and hide the gas station, so, like, let's do the entrance, because we spent so much money on old downtown, you know, for us to have a downtown, so let's finish that, and see if the wires can come underground, and if we can do some landscaping and new sidewalks on both sides.
You, you wanna finish your, do your comments for...
I'm good. It's nine o'clock.
Chris?
Uh, just a cup, one thing, I had the opportunity to do some research and talk to officials at Pinellas County and Sarasota County about, about the economic benefits that they enjoy from the Pinellas Trail, Railroad Trail, that was converted, it's thirty-seven miles up there, the annually, their government estimates that they generate about a hundred million dollars in economic activity from that, Sarasota, the Legacy Trail is only ten-point-six miles, and they estimate that they generate sixty million dollars of economic activity annually, so, when we talk about the trail, we talk, I think we need to think of it in, in terms of the, in investment into our local economy, and I just wanted to pass that on to, sort of, put it, put it in your elevator speech, if you need to talk to people about it, that, yeah, we're investing money, but there's an annual return in economic activity that's worthwhile, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Chris, Jesse?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Jamie?
Just real quick, you know, I had to step out during the workshop, and I just wanted to state how I think that this year's the twenty-fifth anniversary, all of the events that took place, I would like to keep it to that level, I think it was amazing, the feedback that I heard from our citizens, and people that even came in from outside of Bonita Springs, really enjoyed it and loved it, and, so I think it's important, I guess, I did hear word of possibly looking at sponsorships, I'm not opposed to hearing that, but I definitely would like to see it stay the way it is.
Sounds good, thank you. Alright, it's late, so, I'm gonna skip myself, public comment, any public comment, don't rush up.
Go out the door.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn!